Ladies and gentlemen, this is the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, December 12, 2023, and I will ask you to stand with us as we pledge allegiance to the flag led by Mayor Protem Hatman.
(Inaudible).
First item on the agenda is something we take pride in doing around here where we have people who are members of our staff that do things that are commendable and need to be pointed out so that the public knows what kind of folks they have working for them. This is for Kimberly Henry. This letter comes from the Texas Women's Leadership Institute. The Texas Women's Leadership Institute is proud to announce that Kimberly Henry of Rockport, Texas, has completed the coursework and successfully graduated from the 2023 Texas Women's Leadership Institute. Ms. Henry was selected from a very competitive field of local government professionals from around the state of Texas. She was one of 20 female executives who were chosen to participate in a program designed to prepare and inspire women to become female city managers in Texas. Ms. Henry participated in course discussions, tours, in-person sessions, completed assigned books, and was introduced to female leaders of the Texas city management profession. Combination of leadership assessments, tours, and case studies provides well-rounded experience and learning more about the intricacies of the city management profession and creating a network of colleagues who will support each other in the future. The Texas Women's Leadership Institute was created by Texas women leading government to increase the number of women who are ready to become city managers. The program is financially supported by the Texas City Management Association and is part of a national trend of academies addressing the lack of female representation in chief executive role in cities across Texas. Kimberly, if you'll come up here, I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you so much for all your hard work. She's a valued part of the city and we appreciate her more than you know, and we're going to move over there some time. (Inaudible).
Stevens.[310.02][310.02](Laughter). A direct commendation award in the Police Department for Juan Canales.
If we have a PowerPoint presentation or not, I'll briefly kind of discuss what this award is for. In the agenda packet, Mayor, Council, I think this is the third of these that I've given out. When I got here, I created the chief's direct commendation. We do commendations and there are different awards that we have. This one I created where I can directly give an award to an officer, and it's a ribbon bar that they display on their uniform, and it's for not necessarily something heroic, not saving a life. We have plenty of awards for things like that, but when an officer does something that either a long investigation or they make significant arrests, they do something that's a really big deal in the community, something that deserves more than just simply a letter of commendation. It's something to recognize throughout the rest of their career on their uniform, and that's what this particular thing is here. One of the big complaints that I get quite often since I've been here, and I don't think that it's going to change that significantly, drugs are pervasive in society. Property crime is one of the direct derivatives of drugs that we have. People don't break into your car, break into your house because they want your television, because they want your jewelry. They trade those things for narcotics, and so it's pervasive in society. And we've done a lot since I've been here to attack that. They were doing a lot before I got here, but we've made some real headway, if you recall. We literally took a bulldozer using codes to a house on South Pearl. It was one of the more pronounced places that we had narcotics trafficking. We've taken some significant drug dealers and people that are in the illicit drug trade through Rockport. We've had some good investigations, and that's what this one's about. I want to be very clear, this individual has not yet been convicted, but his arrest is public, so it can be discussed, and he's only been charged with those crimes. But we've determined that this individual is involved and has been involved in a significant number of drug trafficking things in our community in Rockport. And if I could get Detective Canales to come up with me. We arrested, or he arrested, an individual by the name of Jason Moon after a number of months, I think it's six months or more, of investigating him. And I want to be clear, too, that this award was actually nominated to me, brought to me by another one of the detectives that's worked on this case, that said, hey, Detective Canales has done great work. And some of these, and if we can roll through those slides, it began in January of 2023 in earnest, and then we picked up in the summer. And through a lot of surveillance work, we got help from other agencies. The DEA provided some help, but painstaking surveillance work, taking photographs, following people, an undercover buy by another Rockport detective, that we were able to build a case, and then Detective Canales served a parole or probation violation? A probation violation warrant on Mr. Moon, and when he was arrested, he was found in possession of both heroin and methamphetamine in his vehicle. And so we've built a very strong case. Again, I want to be very clear, he's not been convicted. We're all innocent until proven guilty. Nonetheless, his arrest is public, and we made that arrest for an outstanding warrant for probation violation, and in his possession, we found a good quantity of heroin and methamphetamine. Serious drugs that plague our society. There's some statistics on the board right there. Total in the investigation, not just Mr. Moon, but nine arrests, two search warrants were served, 145 grams of methamphetamine, 108 grams of heroin, and oddly enough, 87 grams of crack. We don't see crack too often anymore, but it's a full array of drugs that he's dealing. We also seized $1,955 that's pending forfeiture that we'll use to continue operations like this. There are some photographs of the things that we seized during the search warrants in the arrest. So I'm going to read this citation really quick. "In January 2023, Rockport Police Department CID detectives received information about a subject identified as Jason Moon selling illegal narcotics from two separate residences, one located on Hickory Avenue and the other located on West Terrace Boulevard. Moon has long been known to detectives to be involved in criminal activity, including drug trafficking in and around Rockport. RPD Detective Juan Canales opened an investigation into Moon's activities with the assistance of the Drug Enforcement Agency's Corpus Christi Field Office and a DEA Task Force Officer from the Arandis Pass Police Department. During the investigation, detectives learned through additional information that Moon was also selling illegal narcotics at the Village Inn Motel located at 503 North Austin. The Village Inn Motel is a known location for criminal activity, including drug use and trafficking in Rockport. During a six-month investigation, dozens of hours of surveillance were conducted, several informants were debriefed, and an undercover RPD detective was able to purchase heroin twice from Moon. Detective Canales arrested Moon on July 14, 2023, on outstanding probation violation warrant and found him to be in possession of both heroin and methamphetamine during that arrest. Moon faces additional pending charges, including several counts of delivery of controlled substance in penalty group one, possession with intent to deliver a controlled substance in penalty group one, and assault causing bodily injury to a family member. As a result of this joint investigation, a total of nine arrests were made, with several of the suspects facing both federal and state charges related to the distribution and possession of illegal narcotics. Two search warrants were conducted, and a total of 108.6 grams of heroin, 145.1 grams of methamphetamine, and 87.6 grams of crack cocaine were seized, along with $1,955 in illicit U.S. currency, which has already been forfeited and awarded to the RPD." Correct what I said earlier, it actually has already been awarded to us. "While several other RPD investigators and patrol officers contributed to this successful investigation, Detective Canales's diligence, perseverance, field leadership, and innate investigative prowess went well beyond the normal course of duty and led to the apprehension and prosecution of a well-known local criminal, as well as that of several others. Additionally, this investigation has led to other drug-related investigation operations which remain ongoing at this time. Detective Canales's work on this case clearly exceeded what is normally required or expected, and his actions brought great credit upon himself and the Rockport Police Department and were in keeping with the highest traditions of the law enforcement profession." Congratulations.[736.54][736.54](Applause).
At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience, from persons who have signed speaker's card located table at the back of the training room in the service center and delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins, or written comments received by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. On any agenda item or any subject matter that will be read in the meeting, persons wishing to address the council who have registered using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace is prohibited by law will be caused for the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. Since we have the number of people involved that want to be speaking with us tonight, we are going to put the speaking time, all for the items 23 through 26 will take place during the public hearing. If you didn't sign up to speak on those items, but you want to, you can. So when we have a public hearing in just a few minutes, all of the items to be considered and spoken on will come at that time so that you can get through all of anything that you want to say in your three-minute time period on those items, and we will move those to the early part of the meeting as opposed to the end of the meeting. Also, if you are here on other items, item number 17 or 21, you can speak at the time that those items are called. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. All consent agenda items.
I have citizens to be heard, it's not on the agenda.
I'm sorry, what?
I have citizens to be heard, it's not on the agenda.
We're going to get to that, okay? I have got two, and I'm glad you mentioned that because they're laying right here in front of me, right beside this other sheet I was about to read. And Christie has one, too. I have one from Andrew Kane. This is for citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda. Mr. Kane?
Are you aware of the city staff's attempts to delay or deny public information the citizens have a right to access? Are you aware of these games cost taxpayers thousands of dollars in unnecessary legal fees? At the beginning of our petition process, we needed to know the number of out-of-city ratepayers. The city attorney referred our request to the Attorney General for an opinion despite us citing the specific state law that requires the city provide us this information. Too bad the left hand of the city didn't know what the right hand was doing, as odds already provide that information, and the city attorney had to write yet another letter to the Attorney General rescinding his early request. I bet that made the city look silly to the state officials, and the citizens are paying all these legal fees unnecessarily. After the city council meeting a month ago, I filed a public information request for emails between a city and print vendor, as I wanted to verify the claim it was the printer's error was for losing a sentence out of the CDF, provided PDF. I have done business with printers my whole life, and I've always been required to sign off on a proof copy. The city even asked for a proof copy when they sent the email. So city staff either didn't do their job to make sure a proof copy was provided, or there's a cover-up to push blame on the printer. This information would have been relevant for tonight's discussion, however, city staff waited 10 days to respond to my request, and the response was from a city attorney in three pages, in the form of a $117 bill to retrieve the emails. I paid the bill over a week ago, and I still have not received these emails I should have gotten over a month ago. Why is the city consistently using delay tactics in lawyering up on public information requests? It's a tremendous waste of city resources and disrespect to citizens who have a right to access the public information. Direct the city manager to stop wasting city resources and operate in an open, honest, and transparent manner. She works for you, and ultimately, you're responsible for her actions or misdeeds. Thank you.
I didn't know he was going to speak on that, but I'll second that because I've had many public information requests denied, delayed, never responded to, stall tactics, letters from attorneys, many, many of them. There's no reason for that, because if there's nothing to hide, then nothing's hidden. And transparency all makes us better, all of us, makes all of us better. So regarding citizens to be heard, I would like for you to pull Agenda Item Number 12 on the consent agenda for discussion. This is regarding your rules for boards and commissions and appointments. I have a lot of things to discuss on that and recommendations for changes that could make it better, just for all of us. And so I'd like for that to be discussed, if you'll pull that tonight. And then I just want to say, I want to thank the city council. A month ago, the last time you met, you did the right thing. Today is always a good day to do the right thing. You had questions. Your questions weren't answered. There were procedural issues that you were concerned about, and you decided to postpone. And whatever issues we have in life, whether it's city government, our own personal life, maybe it's with our children, always the next best thing is the right thing to do. And so you have that opportunity again tonight. If there's procedures that are out of order, if there are things that don't seem right and you don't have your questions answered, if there's things in the budget that aren't justified, postpone. That's your responsibility to protect the taxpayers of the city of Rockport, and now also the ratepayers in the county that don't live within the city limits. It is up to the city council to govern the city staff, and you are the ones that oversee the budget that's implemented by the staff, recommended by the staff and implemented by the staff, but you work for the citizens of Rockport. And in the case of the petition, you work for the ratepayers. So tonight is again another opportunity for you to do the next right thing, whatever you determine that that is. So tonight, there's a couple of things that are out of order, and your executive session comes before your agenda item. Now, the public hearing, we've been squeezed down, taken four items, and that should be 12 minutes opportunity to speak. They're separate items. They're interrelated, and it's all put into the public hearing, so we have no opportunity to speak on those. Now, I submitted cards to speak individually on each of those items and the public hearing. That is the right, according to the Order of.[1244.08][1244.08](Sound of a radio.)
Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the city council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Do I have such a request from any of council?
I'll pull item 12.
Item 12, all right.
I move to approve consent agenda items 6 through 11.
Do I have a second? Have a motion second. Any further question? If not, I'll call for vote. Word one. Word two. Word three. Word four. Mayor, aye. Passes. Agenda item number 12, deliberate and act on resolution adopting guidelines for city council board and commission appointments.
May I just give you a brief overview of how we're doing this?
Sure. Mayor, council, we've talked about this a couple of times, in that on all of our boards, each ward is not necessarily represented. The mayor basically makes all appointments or has to be approved by council. But what this effectively does is it has each ward member bring someone to the table to serve on the board, so all of your boards are represented. For example, P&amp;Z doesn't have a representative from Ward 2 at this point. So this basically lays out how we will make those appointments. It also lays out that they have to provide their minutes and their meetings and an update and some things like that that haven't been done historically. So we want to kind of get everything in order so that we have appropriate representation. What else? That's pretty much it. It's pretty simple. It's very straightforward. We're not trying to rewrite the charter. We're not trying to supersede any ordinances. We're just asking that things get done, what I consider, in the appropriate manner.
So each individual ward will be responsible for getting a representative on that board through the, I guess, application process?
That's correct.
Or we go seek a volunteer?
You have to bring someone to the table.
Okay.
Essentially. I mean, you may have a volunteer from your ward, and you go to Teresa, and Teresa says, I have three from Ward 2, and you know, you can bring Ward 1 of those. And they all still have to be approved by council, just as they always have been. You don't get unilateral approval, but even the at-large ones still have to be approved by council as a whole. But we need representation from every ward on each board.
Yeah, it'll be, I'm sorry, one more time. It'll be four for the wards, and then the mayor will get the three at large?
The balance. Whatever. So if it's a six-member board, there's going to be four, and the mayor gets two. If it's a five-member, you know, there's four and one. Whatever it is, the mayor will have the balance. Now, that doesn't mean he can't consult y'all, or you know, if it's from your ward, I think he typically depurs to you, but it doesn't change that procedure of how he brings candidates forward. It just changes the procedure that you do bring candidates forward. So that's our biggest concern, is getting representation. Like I said, some things are pretty specific in the charter. We have some ordinances that overarching this, so this is just more of a procedure. That's why it's a resolution, not a board. I also gave you a handout that shows how we will phase in the appointments. So the only vacant spot we have right now is Place 2 on the planning and zoning, so the expectation is that Danielle will bring someone to fill that vacated seat. Every other appointment will take place as they expire, as their terms expire. However, you can remove anybody at any point if you would like to go ahead and get your replacement on there, but we'll discuss that with you at the time that you want to do that.
Other questions?
Vanessa, for the vacancy, like on P&amp;Z, well, actually, there's two vacancies right now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, and I just ask you how, you know, for us to move forward, would the intent be that at our next regularly scheduled meeting, we could consider applications at that point?
That's what I'm recommending. We typically reappoint the boards at the same time each year, but because you have a vacancy, we'll do that at our next regular scheduled meeting. If you have your applicants, right? Because it is your ward. And that would be the procedure throughout the year for any vacancy.
So, and I apologize, I should have asked this a lot of the time. For that particular vacancy will be to the end of the unexpired term, and then it would be for reappointment at the normal?
That's correct.
Okay.
They're filling a vacated term, so they only have until whatever the end of that is, so we don't throw off the appointment schedule or rotation.
I have a question from council. Ms. Rutledge?
Mayor, I don't know if you have, Ms. Rutledge, 1411 Dana Drive, if you have my comment card. I'm going to try to add lib from it. It was Agenda Item 12, and I submitted it online, but that card, that form does not allow for three minutes worth of discussion deliberation. I had a, I looked at the attachment A, I believe, or exhibit A on this, and I had some recommendations, specific language that needed to be changed, and if you have my card, perhaps my councilman can read it, but I'm going to try to discuss it. I think the language is unclear on that exhibit. The language needs to be changed so that it says, "Appointments must be decided by council." So the word must needs to be in there, or shall. It needs to be a directive. And another directive, the language needs to be changed, that each ward shall have or must have a representation on each commission. There is an open-ended that somebody can serve on multiple boards. I don't think that's correct, because right now we have one person on three boards, and there also needs to be some changes that specify a clear prohibition on conflict of interest. So someone serving on planning and zoning, for instance, shouldn't have a construction company that might benefit from those decisions. The other thing that is in that exhibit that is very concerning to me is there's no requirement for minutes to be posted to the city's website, and there's a requirement in the city charter that the zoning board of adjustment minutes are handled by the city secretary, and that those are open meetings, and sometimes those are timely situations where people's property can be confiscated or destroyed. And there's no minutes for most of your boards and commissions on your city website. So this is a case, like I was talking about, where this policy is not ready. It's not prime for time, and you all have not had a chance to really consider all of the details. So add the words, "All public input or comments also must be recorded in the minutes as submitted and transcribed accurately for all of your commissions." They decide very important things. And that all of the minutes must be handled by the city secretary and put on the website within a certain time period, 30 days, 15 days? I don't know. And again, prohibit people with conflicts of interest, and also put a term limit on these boards, the time.[1773.58][1773.58](Sound of a radio.)
We have got 20, I believe, forms filled out from individuals wanting to address this particular subject at the time of the public hearing. We will call your name if you're here and want to speak. You're welcome to do that.
You're on item 12.
Ah, yes, we are. Ah, yes, we are.
Wrap that up.
I think we'll do that.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Alright. I did not ask for a vote on that, Kristi, I'm sorry. Counsel, you heard the comments from public. What is your pleasure on item number 12?
So, if I don't, if you don't mind, y'all can wordsmith it all day, it doesn't matter. But we have to be cognizant that some of the things are already in our city charter. Some of these things are already in city ordinances. This is meant to be more general. It's not a directive. You know, the charter states that you can't have a conflict of interest. It's true that minutes have not been kept. We're asking now for minutes to be kept. So, this is an effort to do better. If you want to wordsmith it, that's fine. Delay it, whatever you guys want to do, that's certainly up to you.
I will add clarification on the minutes. I am responsible, and I do put the minutes online. But citizens and council probably should understand, the Board of Adjustments doesn't meet four times a year, sometimes twice a year, sometimes once a year. So, those minutes don't go online until they are approved at the next meeting, which might be a year. So, you can't set a timeline to say that it has to be on the website within 60 days. And we do not post unapproved minutes. So, clarification on that.
Mayor, there's nothing I'd add. This has been something that's been talked about for a very long time. Really, since, at least since I've been on council. So, I think this is in the right direction. The intent was to establish some guidelines, some continuity amongst the various appointed committees and commissions that we have, and to ensure that we have representation in a process. I think this accomplishes this. I like that it's not trying to repeat other language that exists in other locations like the charter. I think it's simple. Could there be additional adjustments to it? Yeah, always. But I'm okay with it in its current form to at least get us in the right direction and ensure we have a process to fill the vacancies that we have right now and set us up for the reappointment period that's coming up here another half month or half year or so.
You like to make that form a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item 12 as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question from council? For the record, I would like to say that in the business of filling these positions in the different boards and commissions, we don't have a large group of people volunteering to do these things because it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort and some training and like that. And there have been occasions that we didn't have people who were interested from various wards. It is not something that I nor any of my predecessors that I'm aware of went out and had a lot of people trying to do either. So, I have relied a whole lot on other members of the council coming in and finding people within their wards if no one could be found in another ward to appoint. So, that has been the practice, and I am satisfied that it worked reasonably well. If we have more volunteers or more people coming forward wanting to serve on these boards, it makes it a little bit simpler to fill out those positions in a way that meets the standards you're asking for with people from all the wards. Any other statement from council or question? If not, I will call for a vote. We have a motion to approve Ward One.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It passes unanimously. Okay, what I was getting to a little while ago. Open session. City council convened it to open session. I'm lying below that, too. Can't get these things right tonight. Public hearing on proposal to increase water and wastewater rates for all customers outside the city limits of the city of Rockport. As I said a little while ago, this is going to deal with the items related to all the utility rates and so forth and changes. We are going to move those items up on the agenda so that they are coming up right after we hold executive session in a few minutes. So, we will take this opportunity to hear from everyone that wants to speak on this subject. And so, if you didn't fill out a card, you can still speak on the subject. If you did, we're going to see that you get to speak. We also have forms that were filled out by individuals. We will start with Ward One and come this way. They will read any of those that the person who wrote it is not present to speak. If they are not here, we will read what they had to say. And we will start with Ward One.
Elizabeth Green, 703-
Call the public-
703, time.
Hi, Elizabeth Green, 104 Ford Cox Avenue, related to Agenda Items 23 through 26. I'm requesting that the City Council votes no on Agenda Items 23 through 26. The larger legal issue isn't whether the city was four days late on the rate change notice, but whether the city is charging a just and reasonable rate to out-of-city residents. Good playing games, the citizens are watching you, and it's not a good look. Susan Friss, 247 Starboard Avenue, related to Agenda Items 13, 23 through 36, water and wastewater rate increase for out-of-city residents. Respectively request that City Council members to vote no on Agenda Items 23 through 26 regarding water and wastewater rate increases. This is extremely unfair. The rates are already too high. An increase will mean I will no longer be able to afford watering the grass or plants, and that means everything will surely die during our hot summers. My yard will become an ice floor. Thank you. Ed Buckle, 4811 FN 1781, Items 13. It is completely absurd and unfair for the city of Rockport to be charging a quote-unquote "water premium" to those of us who have, who happen to live outside the city limits. This is nothing more than a money grab for the city. The city's position that we quote-unquote "subsidize the water system with the city tax dollars" is a smokescreen herein simple. You are not fooling anyone. Surely, an accountant can figure out the cost of delivering water, divide it equally, and charge everyone on the system the same. Please vote no on Items 23 to 26, which, to my understanding, reset the water rates and personally penalize those outside of the city limits. Thank you, Ed Buckle. Sorry, I moved my voice. Houston Stern, 10 Primrose Drive. As a resident of Harren's Roost subdivision in Fulton, I urge the council to vote no on Agenda Items 23 through 26. The issue is not whether the council was late on sending notice that the items have been originally placed on the agenda, but the fact that the surge car- I'm sorry. The fact that the surge charge increase for out-of-city meters is grossly unfair and does not distribute increased cost of service equity. That's everything.
Yeah, thank you. Ward two.
Steve Lewis, 150 Palm Drive. Please vote no for Agenda Items 13 and 23 through 26. Water rates are too high, and notice was and has not been properly given. Please allow the PUC to have a say in the water rates. Thank you for your attention. Debbie Cleary, 1414 Dana Drive. Please vote no on Items 23 through 26. Leonard Sims, 46 Primrose Circle. We all understand that costs may require increases for government services. However, with Rockport being the sole provider of public water in the county, any rate increases should be applied equitably for all customers. We urge the council to vote no on the proposed rate increases and urge the city to develop a more equitable solution for all citizens. Lucy Rhodes, 219 A. Lazy Road. City council members, greetings. My vote on Agenda 23 through 26 would be no on each one. The unfair rates for Fulton and county is, are well just that unfair. We are all part of Rockport. There has to be a way to resolve this where everyone is happy, at least for now. I hope you will consider this. Thank you very, very much. Laura McCorkle, 807 North 10th Street. I'm requesting that the Rockport City Council deny raising the water rate, tax rate for Fulton and Aransas County. Please put yourself in our place. How would you feel if we were making you pay for an unethical tax and having it be a burden on so many on a fixed and low income? I expect you wouldn't like it or appreciate it either. Please deny this proposal. Thank you for considering this matter on behalf of Fulton and Aransas County.
Thank you. Ward three.
Victoria Crick Thornton, 125 Port Avenue. Vote no on Items 23 through 26. I am against the water rate hikes for our customers outside of the city. It is not fair to pay 47% rate premium for homeowners that are not in the city. Nancy Moody, 141 Harren Oaks. Do not raise water rates. Miki Chavez, 712 Pine Avenue. Agenda Items 23 through 26. Vote no on Agenda Items 23 through 26. Joan Leal, 610 North 6th Street, Fulton. With the utility rate increase. Vote no to, yeah, vote no to utility rate increase for Fulton and Aransas County. Donna Sederbo, Johns, 302 Sanidio Street, Rockport, Texas. Same on city officials for punishing out-of-city customers for years of city officials' fiscal mismanagement.
Ward four.
Kelsey Jennings, 302 West Orleans, Rockport, Texas. Agenda Item 13. She also has, they also have 23 through 26. Vote no on Agenda Item 23. Vote no on Agenda Item 24. Vote no on Agenda Item 25. And vote no on Agenda Item 26. Darlene Davenport. And if you guys are here, please, you guys are allowed to come and speak. Darlene Davenport, 66 Port, I can't see. 23 through 26. Please vote no on Agenda Items 23 through 26. Please allow the Public Utility Commission to determine if the out-of-city rate change is fair. Jason Brown, 506 North Hood Street, Rockport, Texas. And this is going to be on Agenda Item 23 through 26 as well. As a resident of the county, I can see houses considered in the city less than 200 feet away. Is it just to pay almost 50% more for the same services as my neighbors? Vote no on Agenda Items 23 to 26. Ronald Smart, 154 Court Avenue, Rockport, Texas. Items 23 through 26. Vote no on Items 23 through 26. Michael Ashery, 209 Starboard Avenue. I think it's Agenda Item 13. City council should vote no on Items 23 through 26. Water rates should be fair and balanced.
Kurt Hatfield. Vote no on Item 13. Public Utility Commission Texas states that a rate increase must be just with integrity. The city of Rockport has failed miserably on both, behind closed doors, secret meetings that do not benefit the taxpayer in any way. Question, who will pay for the legal defense of this unjust rate increase and the lack of integrity by this board? And will probably have another increase to cover the legal fees. With this, again, unjust increase, when we should expect the quality of the water to be comparable to the rate increase? Please answer at this time. The smell of the water is rotten as the integrity of this board. I thought I lived in Rockport, Texas, not Rockport, California, Kurt Hatfield. I have one question that I'm going to bring up, since I pulled this one to read. One of the things that is said in here, and this is an item that is on the agenda, is that there were behind closed doors, secret meetings that do not benefit the taxpayer in any way. I was not subject to attending any of these meetings. And if any of the rest of the folks know Mr. Hatfield and would get him to give me a call and let me know when, where, and what time, what location, and who was present at those meetings, we will look into it and find out what we can do to take care of that problem. I appreciate that. I've got a group of folks that want to address this public hearing.
Thank you. That's a mouthful that you people just read. You're probably not to so blame for this. It's probably going a long time. Incremental, small raises to out-of-state, out-of-county, out-of-city people. It's wrong. You've heard it. Mike's written about it from a meeting. You record a meeting. I hope you listen to it. Thirty, approximately 30 points come up with no way to treat somebody, unjust. All these, it keeps going on and on. And it's a cover-up. It only came out because you raised it so high this time. We didn't know what's going on. I've been in Fulton for five years. But it's been going on a long time, and it's time to stop it. There's enough wars going on in this world. Why can't we live as Rockport-Fulton? Why can't you, when you go to your session, make a simple decision? Just stop it. Make everybody the same. Make it effective tomorrow. Wrote tonight, you make it effective tomorrow. No, because everything you say, you're going to do it tonight. Nobody knows what it's going to do. It's going to happen. So, I suggest that you listen to what Stephanie said. Listen to the people have said. And the people that you represent, your utilities, there's about 10,000, 11,000 people. 6,000 residents, they call them in a tax roll, parcels. There's 1,032 in Fulton. And backing that out, there's probably about 30 to 300, 3,000 to 3, 3,500 that live in the county. And all these people are approximately 40 to 45% of the bill players are out-of-the-city residents, and they're getting this unfair. You've heard it. I can say it. You've heard it. You know what's happening. Just make your decision. We're going to stop. Forget about the lawsuits. Stop making money for attorneys. We don't want to pay this in the end. You don't want to pay it. Mistakes happen, and they did happen over the years on this particular charge. Just reflect on what you're reading and what's happening. Stop it. Let's forgive and forget and move forward with equal rights for everybody that uses the water and wastewater. Thank you. I hope that you react to this, because it's wrong. Thank you.
Mary Claire Kane, Alvin, Fulton. At your November 14th meeting, I and many others spoke against the excessive water rate increase for your out-of-city Rockport customers. There were at least 20 people here, and I counted up the ones that you guys read tonight. That was about 20. So, if they weren't here tonight, they at least sent in things for you to read. And the other night, in November, there were also statements that were read by people that could not be here. And I didn't expect many people to be here tonight or to have the time to once again express their disappointment and/or their anger at what you are attempting to do to us. Most everyone is busy with preparations for Christmas, which is a season of joy and one that we look forward to each and every year. Why are you holding this meeting tonight? And another one tomorrow night? Are you hoping that we will all just shut up and leave you alone so you can pass these resolutions and attempt to invalidate our petition? I won't be here tomorrow because my church is having a candlelight service, and I will attend that. I'm sure there are other churches who will also be having Advent services. And frankly, those are more important than these council meetings. And probably even some of you on this council and on the staff would like to attend one. Why in the world are you in such a rush to have a special meeting tomorrow night? It is pretty obvious the city staff thinks this is the way to go because they made a mistake. It is pretty obvious the city staff thinks this is the way to go because they made a mistake by not sending out a notice of the rate change. But none of us care about that now. Mistakes happen. We have never seen or heard any information about whether or not there is an added cost to bring water to the out-of-city customers. Our petition has been sent to the PUC and there is a process to be followed. Let the PUC look at the situation you have caused and determine a fair outcome. By now you should be aware that both out-of-city and Rockport customers are upset with such an unfair situation. I am asking you to vote no on agenda items twenty-three through twenty-six. If you do anything other than voting no, you are saying our signatures don't count. And that is a big price for us to pay because of the city staff's mistake. My hope is that with a no vote tonight, and since most of tomorrow's meeting is related to the same issue, maybe that meeting won't have to be held and we can all get back to normal. Thank you for your time and may God bless you during this Christmas season. Thank you.
Kathy Kane.
So Kathy Kane, 109 Boardwalk Avenue. I don't know how you got this first order, but y'all are doing great. So I'm here today to ask you to honor the PUC petition process. Vote no to all four agenda items related to the water and wastewater rates. In September, I asked for the justification for the forty-seven percent unsubstantiated use recharge to non-residents. None was given. The city manager instructed me to take our complaint to the Texas Public Utility Commission via the petition process. We've done that. And I am asking you to honor that process. Vote no to all four agenda items. Last month, I stated the agenda item addressed only two of the rates identified on the petition for the stated purpose of providing relief to the aggrieved and fixed income out-of-city customers. I did the math. My October bill for water was eighty dollars and twelve cents. The proposed change would increase my bill to eighty dollars and eighteen cents. My November bill for water was a hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty cents. The proposed change would increase my bill to a hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-three cents. I ask again, how is that a relief? Vote no to all four agenda items. I'm repeating my closing paragraph from last month since the staff recommendation hasn't changed. At the end of the day, I look at today's discussion as a reaction to the successful petition drive. We have the signatures we need for the PUC to investigate. The city will have to respond and justify the unjustifiable. The forty-seven percent use re-tax applied to the waste and wastewater rates to out-of-city customers. How does the city reply? They modify four items required on the petition. The decision, the effective date, the water minimum bill, and the usage per gallons. Why is this important? They selected only one out of fourteen possible rates. The only base rate listed on the petition. A clear attempt to invalidate the petition. Vote no on all four agenda items and let the PUC process play out on a level playing field. Thank you.
Andrew Kane.
Andrew Kane, 2106 Lakeview Drive. I'm in NCD, great pair. How many citizens have spoken against a forty-seven percent out-of-city surcharge? Twenty-plus at the last city council meeting? I hope you listened to them the last time as I assume many won't come back tonight to repeat their statements. Well, what's wrong on that one? I understand the reason you are holding an executive session following the public hearing. However, you must not abuse your right to do so tonight. I trust each of my representatives to challenge anything being discussed behind closed doors tonight that should be discussed back out here in public and on record. This is clearly a controversial topic. If you do not return here with a vigorous discussion on the record, I will let everyone know you're hiding from your responsibilities of being transparent and accountable to the citizens as required by open meetings laws. I want to leave you with a few points. Do you not see through the games the staff are playing with you and the citizens? Do you really think saving twenty cents per month provides relief to an aggrieved and fixed income rate payer when you're charging them forty-seven percent more per month than NCD taxpayers? That's a joke. Then factor in they're clawing it back five cents per unit in usage. This is a game to invalidate petition. You are smarter than this and please don't let that game succeed tonight. There is no need to rescind the rate and set a new rate due to a notice being sent four days late. That does not make an illegal rate like the city manager is telling you. She is just being dramatic and I'm hoping you react to that. Everyone has now been notified of the rate increase and the city can show good faith by issuing a refund for the first month of the rate increase. Vote no tonight on all agenda items of this topic and instruct city staff to come back at the January meeting for the process to refund the first month's rate increase only. Then you can legally bill that rate for all the following months as a future, as the notice was in time for future billing cycles. Simple and easy. Our petition should move forward unimpeded by the city. To put the nine hundred signatures into context, that is more than the combined number of votes you four council representatives received when you ran for office. You need to let the impartial PUC process play out to decide what is just and reasonable rate. Any act to invalidate petition will show the PC you're acting against the rate payers in bad faith and that won't end well for you.
Mr. Kane, you also have one for item number twenty-three. You've mentioned a little while ago you'd like to get your other three minutes. Go right ahead.
This, this is for this meeting, public hearing. This is for another meeting.
Okay.
I'll wait for it.
All right. Next item on the agenda is an executive session. City Council will hold. For the thirteen? Ah, you do. Separate form. I've read all the cards, didn't get to your form. All right, Kristi Rutledge.
Kristi Rutledge, 1411 Dana Drive. I'm here right now speaking during the public hearing regarding water and wastewater proposed rate increases. There's twenty-three through twenty-six are separate agenda items and I will speak on those later in the meeting. Regarding the public hearing, water and wastewater increases, I have been opposed to your water and wastewater increases and since three years now. They have not been justified and they've been excessive. And the particular water and rate wastewater increases on the agenda tonight are only there because they're replacement for what you propose to repeal in other agenda items. I find that having a wrong intent, again unjustified rates. The rate study that has been quoted had nothing to do with a rate study. It had to do with amount of debt that was proposed to be taken out. But water and wastewater are different, different rates altogether. And I don't think that it's right to propose new rates. Increasing some, changing some just moderately, just for the sole intention of canceling a petition. It's a valid petition. It's been filed. It's on the docket. As a citizen of Rockport, I want that petition to have a fair review because I have not found over the last three years in studying your budget that any of your utility rates have been justified. I can tell you going back to two thousand and twelve, I looked at that budget today. You have one million dollars increase. Your amount of administrative fees have doubled out of your utility funds in ten years. How is that justified? We've never seen any justification for that whatsoever. It's not like our population has doubled. And so I, I want you to oppose the rate increases because they're done for a wrong intention. They're done solely for the purpose of canceling, invalidating the petition. And this is an opportunity for you to do the next right thing and postpone those items. I'm opposed to the rates. Thank you.
Thank you. Next time on the agenda. Yes, sir. You, you have one for item number twenty-one. And I don't, and I don't see another one. That's all right, go ahead and start.
Patrick Kane, 1123 East Cedar Street, Rockport. This petition protesting the out-of-city rates was submitted to the Public Utility Commission last week. None of these nine hundred people believe the city is charging just and reasonable rates as required by the Texas Water Code. Yet the city staff must believe the rates are just and reasonable as they, as they are asking you to reaffirm the forty-seven percent rate premium tonight. Since we are at a clear impasse, why not let the commission review the rates? They're impartial. They have experts who deal with the rate setting process every day and their job is to ensure the rates are just and reasonable for both the consumers and the city. Why are we even here tonight if the rate review is now in the commission's hands? It's simple. City staff don't want the commission to review the rates. Why? One reason is the city hasn't done a legitimate rate study for at least sixteen years. I looked at twelve studies on the city's website and not a single rate study calculated the added costs for delivering utilities to rate payers outside the city limit. You can find more info on rockportwater.com. All the, the studies are linked. Another reason the city staff doesn't want a commission review is because you based your decisions on misinformation. You were told in the Austin area, out-of-district rate is one and a half times, which was not true. And it isn't even relevant for setting rates locally. You were also told at the last council meeting that, this is a quote, no supplies, training, computers, legal counsel or anything of the sort, as well as no communication comm center is paid from the utility funds. Which again wasn't true as each of these are specifically listed in the utility fund budget. You can check rockportwater.com for details. Tonight, you will be told by city staff that you have an illegal rate and that you must rescind it. This is also not true. It's been over a month since the city was four days late and providing notice. And not a single rate payer has filed suit against the city because of the late notice. No lawsuit, no lawsuit absolutely means no action is required on the city's part. Over twenty people spoke up last month against the city's action. City staff had an extra month to come up with solutions. What other options are they giving you tonight to cure the late notice without invalidating, without invalidating the petition? None. That is because they have only one objective in mind and that is to invalidate the petition as they know they cannot defend the forty-seven percent rate premium in front of the commission. I'm asking you to vote no on all four agenda items and to allow the commission an opportunity to review the rates. Please show us a little respect and let our signatures count. That's it for public hearing. I did have, and I want clarification on this, I did have a card to speak on item twenty-four.
That was the one I was asking about a little while ago. Go ahead and do it.
So, so Andrew had one for
I know.
And so he wants to speak. Can we speak at those agenda items?
We will come back after executive session and when we do, we're going to, we're going to address these items ourselves. So we want to hear what you want to say now so we know.
Yeah, but I was, I purposely didn't speak on twenty-three because I figured thirteen right now. I'm giving you my input on the form. But my, what I want to speak about on twenty-four depends on how you vote on twenty-three.
Okay.
So, so you can come later?
Yes, you can.
So I'm not going to be able to speak on twenty-three?
I'm sorry.
I'm not going to be able to speak on twenty-three?
Yes, you can. Okay. Well, I'll, I'll get both of you on in here to take care of it.
Okay, I understand. Thanks.
Sure. Is there anybody else who had a card or a form that was up here? I don't have any more except on other items. Did anybody else think you had a form to address something that we have done so far? If not, it is seven thirty-two and we are declaring that the public hearing is ended. We are about to go into executive session. City Council will hold executive session pursuant to provisions of chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in section five five one point zero seven one. Consultations with attorney seeking the advice of attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer and on a matter in which the city, the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearing conflicts with this chapter. Utilities repealing rates and rate settling. And two, Concho Street General Land Office, GLO drainage projects. Section five fifty-one point zero seven two, deliberations about real property to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with the third person. And section five five one point zero seven four, personnel matters deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of public officers or employees. A, the city secretary, B, the police chief, C, the city manager. It is seven thirty-four and we are in executive session.
It is eight forty and we are back in general session. I'm going to move items twenty-three through twenty-six up to next on the agenda. So I was calling now for number twenty-three, which was postponed from November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and I have Mr. Andrew Kane would like to address this.
Andrew Kane, twenty-one oh six, Lady Drive. I do not have much more to add than I've said over the past few months. Let's talk about the nine hundred signatures we're paying on petition. Do you realize, you do realize only one person, i.e. ratepayers, has had a petition for household? Unlike the city council election where every eligible person who's been in a household could cast a vote. Despite that, a large majority of ratepayers in Fulton and Rans County are second homeowners or people who do not live here full-time. To get ten percent of them to sign a local petition with a real tall tax intake, yet we're able to get twice the required. Back to the nine hundred that signed a petition, despite these obstacles, that is nearly three times as many voters who voted for all four of you council members sitting up here tonight combined. Think about that. We got nine hundred to sign, which is more than twice the voters that voted in any ward in Rockport in the last general election. And again, three times as many voted for the four of you combined. That is a powerful statement about the citizens. You need to respect them. Think hard about your vote, your votes tonight because the nine hundred plus, the hundreds or possibly thousands of others who wanted to sign or are not eligible to sign are all watching your actions tonight. Come on, forty percent percent for more with no qualified rate study to even bring to the PUC to show increased costs to deliver these services? Do you want to continue to divide the citizens of this great town and county or prove we do things right here in Rockport? The last four years, I have been a major player in calling the local governments out and holding them accountable. Let me share tonight on Facebook like I did after your last council meeting. Our elected officials in Rockport are not so bad after all. It's a tough, thankless, and unpaid job, but they are taking their responsibility seriously and doing the right thing. Vote no to all four of these agenda items tonight. This impartial PUC process won't take long. Last week, the PU assigned us an administrative law judge, the Honorable Susan E. Goodman. We have a docket number already, five-five-nine-four-two, in the case petitioned by ratepayers appealing the water and wastewater rates established by the city rock court. Judge Goodson has already sent out her first order in this case. Number one, commission staff must file on the administrative completeness of the petition by December twenty-seventh. The city rock court must file a response to the petition by December thirtieth. By December twenty-seventh, the petitioners, the city, and commission staff must confer and file comments on how this proceeding should be processed and propose a procedural schedule. The city's legal staff has already filed a notice of appearance. The petitioners have already compiled and responded to the judge, judge's first order. If you invalidate petition already on the honorable Judge Goodson's docket by playing obvious games to circumvent her jurisdiction, you might just piss off the wrong judge and suffer some consequences.
This particular item is to liberate an act of first reading when ordinance the city council, the city of Rockport, Texas, partially repealing ordinance number nineteen oh nine regarding water rates for ratepayers located out of the city, providing for refunds, providing for the validity of said ordinance, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict here with providing an effective date. Okay, I'm sorry, I just don't have your sheet here anymore, but you, you have it. Go ahead. Yes.
Mayor, City Council, Christie Rutledge, fourteen eleven, Dana Drive. Regarding item twenty-three, this is to repeal the water rates that you passed in September. And the reason that's given in the cover sheet on the agenda packet is because the notice to out-of-city customers was not sent out. I, I don't know if that's true or not, but I'm gonna say it is. My question is, has, has that ever been sent out? Because I looked back and the Texas Legislature through House Bill twenty-six ninety-four, passed that, twenty-six ninety-four, saying that in two thousand and eleven, that you have sixty days to notify out-of-city customers of rate increases. So have you ever done that before? And so isn't the right thing to do is just to go ahead and go all the way back to two thousand and eleven and repeal all of those rates? Because you've never sent that notice out before. So it's just an opportunity for you to do the next right thing. The right thing for you to do is to not have any surcharges whatsoever between the city of Rockport and customers outside of the city because you have not provided any justification whatsoever for those surcharges. It does not cost any more money for someone living over the, the city line in Fulton or in one of the doughnut holes for you to give water to them. So the only rectification, the only right thing for you to do is to vote no on twenty-three to twenty-six. For you to use the excuse for your city manager and your, the attorney that advises them to use the excuse that this is about a notice is just a lie. It is so obvious that the idea of repealing these rates is just to avoid the petition and accountability. The next right thing is the right thing to do. Because if that was the issue, that you've not, you didn't issue notice, then you would go all the way back to the eighty-second legislature in two thousand and eleven, your twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen budget, and I'm gonna read it to you. The annual water rate, water and wastewater cost of service study recommended keeping the demand base rates the same, increasing the outside-of-city limit ratio one point four, and increasing the volumetric rates seven point five for fiscal year twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen. That's a quote from your twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen budget. So if you've never issued the notice before, what's the?
Thank you, Ms. Rutledge. Yes, reminder.
So Mayor and Council, we've discussed this. It's the same agenda item that we saw back in November. Of course, as we know, our notice was not properly sent out. One of the requirements is a, a, the beginning date, which we have the documentation that that was left off by our printer. And so effectively, we are collecting a rate illegally at this point. We can repeal it and we will need to refund everything that we have collected improperly up to whatever date the repeal is made.
Sure, so Mayor and Council, if, if, if I might, I'd like to address twenty-three and twenty-five together. It's essentially the same. One is just the water rate, the other is the wastewater rate.
Okay.
And with, with respect to that, so what I, what I do wanna highlight is there's a section of the water code thirteen point oh four-three I that essentially provide that if you're municipal, you're on utility and you're raising the rates of your out-of-city customers, you've got sixty days in which to notify them. And it's very prescriptive in there is what you're supposed to do. Supposed to have the effective date and, and other items that are, that are located in there. The notice that was originally provided by the city to the printers to give to a third party to, to send out actually had all that information, was, was, was properly sent to the printer at some point, and I don't know when. I was not, you know, I'm obviously not a third-party printer here. But the, but it was not, the, the part that had the section and then some of the rates, I believe, were, were, was not in there. I'm sorry, the effective date was, the effective date was not included in there. When you look at, when you look at the thirteen point oh four-three of the Texas Water Code, it's, it does indicate and it speaks into the shall, the city shall do this. Effectively, what that does is the rate that is, that is provided by the city to out-of-city customers, in-city customers are pretty different than out-of-city. What that effectively does is that it makes the rate that was, that, that was adopted by the city ineffective, okay? And, and, and subject to challenge, okay? There is a challenge right now to your, to your rates that has been, as you know, been filed at the Public Utility Commission. And one of the, one of the demonstrations that we're going to have to make as a city is did we comply with thirteen point oh four-three I of the, of the Texas Water Code? And I'm not gonna be able to make that demonstration, quite honestly, because of, because of the error that we made. Recommendation to you is to repeal the rates that are, that, that have been sent to you, that, that have been, were adopted in August. And I do wanna, I do wanna make clear that the items twenty-three and twenty-five are independent of twenty-four and twenty-six, okay? So they're not, they're not conflated. Essentially, what the, what the, what the petition that has been filed at the PUC is seeking to do is for there to be, to set a, a, is to appeal the rates that were adopted. Well, in essence, what, what has happened is, is the, it's done what it, what is required to do or intended to do. Y'all are going back, y'all are, y'all are being asked to consider repealing the rate back to what it was before. Why? Because the city frankly didn't, didn't provide the notices that were required. And I stand on questions you may have.
Okay.
So it was asked if the outside-of-city customers, have they ever received any notice?
This is both of our first year here. I can't speak to what has been done in the past.
I meant currently, like whenever the?
Yes, ma'am. When, when, when we, when we determined what, that there was an error, the electronically received, the, the notices that were sent out electronically were correctly done. It was the ones that, that received mail notice are the ones that did not receive it properly.
How many, do you know, like a percentage of the?
It was if, if, and, and I'm only going on memory from the period of time that we discussed it. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it was approximately a third that were, is that right?
A third received it.
A third written versus electronic, right?
I don't know.
I, that, that's.
Without having that down.
Yeah, that's not, that's my memory of it. It was about.
It was a significant portion.
If, if we do not move forward with item twenty-three, if, approximately, how long is this process at the PUC?
The, I mean, I would estimate probably eighteen to twenty-four months.
Before we even see any kind of relief or, or decision from the PUC, is that?
Correct. I mean, there's, there's several, there's several steps that we have to go through. One is an administrator step, which is what we're, which is what the petition is now. And, and I would respectfully disagree that a judge has been assigned. Only the hearings examiner has been assigned for determination as to whether there's administrative completeness of the application. A judge won't be assigned until the case is referred to the state office of administrative hearings who would actually hear the case. That, that is where most of the time takes is in the process of SOA. After the SOA proceeding does, then, then that, that decision is then forwarded, recommendation, I should say, is forwarded to the PUC for final decision.
I do wanna say that we did get documentation on all of the correspondence that city manager did go through with the, with the company that did put it off. I wanna make sure that is on record and that it was a error on their part. On our part, there was administration that should have double-checked it, yes, but this is something that we did and it happened and we need to, we have to fix it. We can't keep doing this illegally on and on every month. And if it takes eighteen to twenty-four months, that means we have eighteen, twenty-four months of back pay to pay from having to fight this. This isn't about taking on a petition. This is about making our, on our, our end, that's our job, to make something legal if it's not legal right now. And that's kind of how we have to look at this number. That's why it's separate from the other individual items on this agenda.
If, if we lift the ordinance as it is and did not repeal it and the time went onward, we went to twelve, twenty-four months, we would have to refund everything that was collected according to the rate that is not legal because it was not timely delivered, along with other administrative costs that the city would be responsible for.
Yes, there's certain costs that are associated, obviously.
Yeah.
City's defense of, of, of it at the PUC is a cost that, that would, that the city's incurring.
Yeah.
But, but yes, you're right. As for every dollar that was, you know, collected in, on a rate that wasn't properly adopted, is a dollar that you're gonna have to refund later.
Yeah. And so it, it is important for us as people who were elected to serve the city of Rockport, to do what is in the best interest of the city of Rockport. And if we can't do that, whatever the result may be, we are not doing the job that we were sent here to do. And it's my belief that we need to repeal this ordinance, not because it will cause a problem for folks that worked very hard, and I agree with you, on a petition, but because to sit and do nothing would allow us to create debt for the people who pay the regular taxes for the city and so forth. And it would create additional headaches for us in oncoming twelve to twenty-four months. And that is not what we're here to do. Anything else?
Really modeling comment is, you know, it continues to be, it's very frustrating that we're here. We keep trying to do the right thing and we just keep finding another opportunity for improvement, if you will. I think that the process we're going through is, is painful as it is, and I'm not just talking about utility rates. I'm talking about, you know, all the process improvements we've been trying to make over the last, well, since you came here, Vanessa. I mean, we're, we're still finding administrative challenges that, that we've inherited. It is what it is. We gotta fix it. At this point, we know we're doing something that's not correct. We're obligated to correct it today. And then we'll figure out the rest of it afterwards.
Um, it's difficult for me. I agree with many things that have been said. Just as if I, you know, last meeting, I supported upholding our city charter and holding the public hearing prior to this. You know, with that same stance, I have to uphold the legal. I have to uphold the legal obligations, um, and these items are separate. So I have based my decision on the responsibilities of my petition, and to know that I support the petition because I support the voices behind every signature on there. Um, from the start, I did not agree with the rates. I still don't agree with the rates.
Anyone else? I'm going to make a motion. We approve item number twenty-three as read. I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Now I'll call for vote, word one.
Nay.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Passes four to one. Next item on the agenda is item number twenty-four, deliberate enactment first reading of an ordinance mending the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter one oh two, Utilities, Article two, Water Service, Division three, Service Charges by Mending Water Rates for Out-of-City Customers, Providing for the Validity of Said Ordinance, Repealing All Prior Ordinances in Conflict Here With, and Providing for an Effective Date. Mr. Kane.
I'm Patrick Kane, eleven twenty-three, East Cedar Street, uh, Rockport. Uh, if you're really truly concerned about following the law, then the rate that you have is illegal. You have no rate study to support the new rate, much less the old thirty-eight percent premium. All right, look at the rate studies yourself. None of them would address the out-of-city cost differential for delivering services. So the rate should be set equal, right? This next action, you have an opportunity to set a rate. Set it to be equal to the in-city rate, right? With the understanding, you're going to have to probably increase both rates in short order. So task city staff with doing a rate study, set up different classes because it costs different money to service sewer to islands of Rockport than it does to Fulton or to the Donut Halls, right? So task them to do a rate study, and then come back with a, a proper rate for in-city, out-of-city. Because state law requires just and reasonable rates, and you cannot attest to that today. And when we do the next petition, you won't be able to attest to it either, right? The, the data is not there. You do not have any data to support the, the rate change. All right, so there are a few errors in your, well, not errors. Um, you have at least one error in your new rate. You left out the two-inch rate for a commercial as a base rate, so I assume you're not going to give them a free service. So you need to fix that. Um, city staff is playing games. They reduced the base rate for the three-quarter inch residential meter twenty cents, but they make that back up by increasing the usage rates by a nickel. So it just works out to be about the same, right? Five thousand, fifty-five hundred gallons is average use for a city our size. So you save twenty cents on one hand in the base rate per month, and then you make it up on the usage rate. But you also increased the usage rate for the, um, for the other tiers. So you're actually charging with these new rates, you're charging more than the last rates that you had. And what's even more insulting, now you're charging your out-of-city residential more than you're charging your out-of-city commercial. That makes no sense, right? Because you increased the usage rate on residential, you didn't increase it on, um, commercial. You don't need to increase any of the usage rates. Um, and if you really are respectful of our time that we put into this effort, which is hundreds of hours, then help us with the next petition. Put something in this next rate increase that tells people they can go to rockportwater.com for the petition, right? I'm tired of being out there, walking the streets to get, you know, the, the signatures, and hearing people complain about all the other problems that they're experiencing in the county, right? And the other issues that they have with city service, right? Help us by putting the proper information out so that your ratepayers have info on what they need to do. And that's all. Thank you.
So I'm probably the only one in this room that's had a complaint filed against them about on the PUC, which I got me in July on my RV park. I never heard anyone say, "We didn't notice properly, so the rate for next year and a half is invalid." Just re, resend the damn notice, and the next year and a half rates are fine. It's not that rates were illegal, your notice was late. So send the notice and leave the rates alone. But that would have been too easy, just send a notice. The first month would have been the illegal rate, not the next year and a half. Correct your mistakes. And who proved that somebody did?
Chrissy Rutledge, fourteen eleven Dana Drive. This is about, uh, new water rates. Obviously, there is no reason to have new water rates. Um, I think you've been given bad advice, untruthful advice. Uh, you didn't need to repeal the water rates at all. You just needed to send the notice. And you sent the notice by email. There is no penalty for having a late notice. So there's no reason for these rate increases on twenty-four and twenty-six. Um, they're not justified, just like they weren't justified in your budget workshop this year, and the year before, and the year before, and the year before. Your two thousand and eleven rate, uh, water surcharge at one point four, um, wasn't justified. And there probably wasn't a notice sent out there. We all get what's going on here. This is all just, uh, legal mumbo jumbo to try to, um, save face on, uh, and cancel the petition. But what you're doing is you're making it worse for the next petition, for people like me that live in the city of Rockport, who will have to pay the fees to the, uh, Public Utility Commission when fines come back, and when he gets paid a lot. He gets paid a lot every time there's a petition, every time you don't do the right thing. So these rates aren't justified, so you're doing the same thing again. There's no justification in the agenda packet for item twenty-four and twenty-six that justifies any surcharge whatsoever. Your surcharge is back since two thousand and eleven, never got a notice to out-of-city, and so this whole thing is just about canceling the petition. It's not about doing the right thing. And so shame on you, all of you. Uh, no reason for these rate increases.
So, um, can you get that on screen for me? So, um, Kimberly's passing out what is going to be on screen in just a second. So we have a copy in front of you, so it's easy to follow. This is to, um, consider the adoption of a new water rate. What you just did rescinded the increase, which is the second blue column. That is what we voted as our rates for this year. So now the green column is our effective rate. Does that make sense to everybody right now? Somebody yell if I lose you. So the green column is our effective rate as of this moment. I've put three options up there. You can consider those or any other option. The highlighted items on the relief rate are a little bit different than what was in your original packet. Actually put the increase on the wrong item. Um, so the highlighted items are the ones that have been adjusted. I will be happy to answer any questions. Oh, the final column is giving a three-point-six percent increase, which is the amount of increase that the in-city customers received this year. It does not make the rates equal. It makes the increase equal. So you can stay on the green column with no increase over last year. Um, again, and then I've explained the other, the other three columns. So I'll answer questions, and we can discuss any other options.
Counselor.
Going, going back to our workshops, and, and when we, when we were working on this, uh, we were using the new, new gen study, which was two years old. And I just feel like the, the, the information, the data given to us was, or is outdated, and, and, uh, maybe we missed it. Uh, I missed it because I was the one that suggested the rate. I felt like I was just throwing a dart at a dartboard and not knowing what I was aiming for. But I feel like we really need to do a, a rate study to, a valid rate study to, to validate whatever rate we come up with, if there's an increase or, or decrease, or whatever it may be, to, uh, to justify what we're doing to the citizens inside and outside of the city.
So an option there would be to keep it at the, the green column rate, the, the, what I'm calling the three-nine-fifteen rates, and then authorize to put out an RP for a, for a rate study.
How long does a rate study la, uh, take?
Uh, it'll take eight months, six, eight months? Six, eight months. It'll take a little while.
So we'll probably end it at-
We can have it by our next budget cycle. We can at least have a good feel for it by our next budget cycle. It might not be finalized till after, but we can have some preliminary numbers by then. If we, if, but we got to move. That's what we're going to do.
And that just takes us back to last year's rates.
For your out-of-district payers. They will still bear the three-point-six percent increase.
In-city will start with a three-point-six percent increase. Out-of-city would remain, uh, flat as of last year.
Correct.
My opinion would be go with green, get a rate study before, uh, before I feel comfortable. I, they had a, they have a petition that's been filed, and, and I understand that we, we messed up, and we're trying to correct that. And so I think the only way that I, I feel comfortable trying to correct it is with validated. All right, that's, that's my opinion. If you want me to make a motion before anybody else talks, it's, I feel like everyone else needs to talk.
We'll keep talking.
Vanessa, maybe there's a question for Robbie. Um, do we know what, what this, um, essentially what this, this does on the budget? So we rolled back out-of-city to essentially last year's number. If we don't make any further change the rest of this, we'll just say fiscal year for, for discussion purposes, what's, do we know what that number impact may be?
So if I could jump in, I won't put Robbie on the spot.
But it was fun.
I know. It was fun.
Sorry, the panic within your face. No, I'm just kidding.
The reports take a significant amount of time, like eight hours to run, and so we did not plug in specific rates. But I will remind you that the, I think it's blue, the blue box put us taking about seven hundred thousand dollars out of our reserves. So anything you choose up there is going to go further out of reserves. Can our reserves handle it? Yeah, you know, because I, I believe that the product, a good study, is going to give us all better data, and, and our reserves can handle it, and we would be better off on the other side. Um, but it is going to take a dip in your reserves. But I don't have a number for you. It's going to be more than seven hundred thousand in the hole.
Oh, it, yeah, for me, I just, I look at my, my own bills. I, I own property and pay water for an outside-city property. It was three dollars and eleven cents was the difference for me when the rate increased. Now, I'm not a high-water consumer outside-city limits, but it was a three dollars and eleven cent for, for one residential tap, which may be a normal consumer. I don't know.
So that's the increase in the base rate was three dollars and eleven cents a month. So if, if you stayed within the base rate, that would be your increase.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Yeah, I'm good. I'm sorry. No, it's okay. Just wanted to make sure. Um, I, I'm kind of happy to agree with Councilmember Brundrette. I mean, we, we did do a wrong. We have to correct that, and I don't want to, and, you know, I don't want to take away all the hard work that I did with that petition. I really don't. Um, I think that if we can handle it and go roll back to the predate rates, and we can get that rate study, I think at least next year, when we go back to this, to the drawing board, we have an actual, this is what it needs to be. We need to make it right, and, you know, this is what we have to do. And we have, we can't have, we don't have any excuses. We have backups. We have, you know, receipts to show what we have to handle. So that's kind of where my head is at right now on it.
So we don't have an adequate rate study to support the costs between what it takes to provide water to our in-city and out-of-city. Just for example, the impact of the example that was made is the twenty-feet rule. You have one person twenty feet away receiving outside rates. How can you say that those two residents have a, a greater service cost?
So again, we'll go back to the costs that are not in the enterprise fund, that are not included, that your in-city taxpayers, admin or tax, goes to supplement the out-of-city water rate. So again, I will say, we take a part of admin staff and put that into the enterprise fund, but the admin staff's legal fees, supplies, opposing all of the, all of the ancillary stuff that goes, does not go in, come out of the enterprise fund. So that's area number one, where taxpayers subsidize the out-of-city ratepayers. So we did a little, we did a little number, number magic. If you stay, not magic, we did some calculating. If you are on the base rate alone, you pay, it was like a hundred and twenty-five dollars more than someone in the city. Whereas someone in the city then additionally pays an average of fifteen hundred dollars in taxes. So there's a, there's a differential there. Um, again, the comm center does not get anything out of the enterprise fund, but they take after-hours call, everything from five PM to eight AM. Um, so that's a cost that is borne by the taxpayers that is not taken out of the enterprise fund. So there is a cost of service that may not be a greater cost of service, which I think there's some justification that it is, but there are expenses that are not covered by the out-of-city ratepayers because they do not pay admin or taxes. So there, to answer your question, there is a greater cost of service. Do we need to prove it? Probably. You know, in our new gen state, there was a differential for out-of-city ratepayers. So obviously, they had a justification at that time. That was two years ago. We've had, um, increased inflation that we haven't seen. So there was a justification at that point even. So we can continue on, but we're going to have to, you know, we'll, we'll have data to prove it up if we go on Councilmember Brundrette's recommendation.
And I have to kind of go with that. I did, and this is why I postponed it last month, because I don't have the time to do the research, go look at other cities, how it worked. I looked at a lot of rate studies. I looked at a lot of cities around the state, around the state of Texas. Majority has a, a larger amount out of their out-of-city to their in-city. And it is a big part because in-city does have the extra taxes put in on them, on, so the out-of-city. Again, when we're looking at that, we ought to have the, we have to have that backup. So during the rate study, we can have, hey, this is what it looks like. This is what should be, that's what we have to do. That's why I don't feel comfortable going down to zero, because if we do that, to, you know, going back to have you guys have the same rates, then at the end of the day, our in-city residents are going to be paying a lot more than the out-of-city are. And that's not fair to them at all. So we need to stick to what it was, and we need to do the rate study, start off right, and go forward from there. That's why I feel comfortable just staying at that first column there.
Mayor, please. Excuse me. Point of privilege again. May I, uh, ask citizens' question?
Sure.
Mr. Kane, uh, either of y'all, um, uh, I, I don't want to take anything away from the petition. I, I'm very proud of the work y'all, y'all have done. Is this something that could be agreeable if we try to, try to get the rate study and revert back to, to our, our last year rates and, and try to gather data?
All right, so, so I did a lot of door knocking. So I did a lot of door knocking. So for the record, Patrick Kane. And people weren't aware they were paying a premium even last year, and finding out they paid a thirty-eight percent premium last year, and realize it'll be a little bit different because you're bringing up the city rate, so I'll just say thirty- And realize it'll be a little bit different because you're bringing up the city rate. So I'll just say thirty-three, right? To make a number up. They weren't even happy with that, right? But the reality is, you know, as council said, we're a year plus away from a decision from the Public Utility Commission. So if you're gonna do a rate study now, right, maybe we get the same resolution. What we don't get with y'all doing a rate study is we don't get paid back, you know, the overage. And, and I understand your point, that you believe that the city people will be subsidizing um, the out-of-city rate. I, I don't believe that, um, because they don't know, right? And if they truly operated the utility as an enterprise fund, then all costs are captured within that fund and spread to all ratepayers. Right? So really what it comes down to is you have different classes, right? And you can't say the people in the donut holes would pay any more than people in the city, because it costs no more to deliver to them. Right? But, but to answer your specific question, right, no one's gonna be happy they're still paying thirty-three percent more, especially if you're in the donut hole. When you, when I believe the Public Utility Commission would say they would have an equal rate. Now, yes, y'all need to get your bookkeeping right and get your costs transferred that are legitimate into the enterprise fund. That's why it's called an enterprise fund. It's supposed to capture all costs and revenues within the fund. Right? So, so really it's inexcusable that the city can't articulate what cost it has today in subsidizing the utility. And then when we are told what cost, we go look at the budget and those costs are maybe some, right? You used the word no, but some of those costs are clearly in the budget. Right? So, so people aren't gonna be happy, but if it brings us resolution, that's all we ask for from the beginning, in Au- in August. We want a just and reasonable rate, because that's what's required by state law. Right? And to answer someone's question, I remember who asked, it's forty-three thousand dollars a month. Right? That's what we were told last month, the difference between the, the um, existing rate and the new rate. That y'all were collecting forty-three thousand dollars a month in excess of what was approved. Right? So if you just revert back to the old rate, the city's gonna be short half a million dollars at the end of twelve months, right, the end of the year. So that answers the other question. That.
Yes, sir. I said. Now, we spoke about earlier, about the data. We don't know if that.
Yeah.
Is it, is it gonna truly, at the end of the day, it wanna be a one-on-one?
Yeah. But, well, I can assure you that if y'all set a new rate today, I am going to petition it. I'm going to get the ten percent signatures. It will go to the POC and then a year from now, right, because that rate will be December fifteenth. So twelve to eighteen months from now, you're gonna pay all of that back and probably more. Right? Because accepting thirty-five, thirty-three percent premium is a gift to the city. Because I can assure you, the people outside the city should not be paying even that high of a premium. Now, I tell you, my brother back here, my sister back here, they have a completely different opinion than me. Right? They are, no, we don't agree, right? We wanna petition. We wanna fight this. Right? I, I'm more agreeable, because I just want to get to a solution. And the solution is a just and reasonable rate for all ratepayers and the city. Do the rate study, right? There are good examples of rate studies out there. Leander had one in twenty twenty-one that looks pretty good. Right? Y'all's rate studies are not rate studies, despite having one in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. It's not a rate study. It's just a simple math equation. If you collect, if you need two dollars and fifty cents, if you collect a dollar from people in the city, you need a dollar fifty from the people outside the city. That's all your rate study is. Alright, do a rate study.
Brad, can I give my thirty second? I can't do another thirty seconds.
With all due respect, maybe we didn't get to talk at all last meeting about these items. Everybody else has had a chance to talk. I, I would love the council to be able to have this opportunity to deliver. Brad, I appreciate you throwing a lifeline for additional information, but we, we've given our constituents the opportunity to speak.
Good advice.
Alright, council.
For item twenty-four and twenty-five, uh, I move to adopt the pre-nine, uh, nine fifteen rates with.
Four and six.
I'm sorry, twenty.
You can't do them together.
Oh, do one at a time.
We haven't even, yeah.
Apologize. Uh, item twenty-four proposed the pre-nineteen, nine fifteen rates with the understanding we will. Get a rate study in the works.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion?
Just for clarity, um, with item twenty-three, when we rescinded the out-of-city, city rates, didn't that revert to the nine fifteen? So again, clarifying, Brad, your motion didn't.
So we don't need a, we don't need an adopted, uh, so twenty-four doesn't mean anything? Just a.
Well, so since you repealed it already, then that's automatically, well, upon second reading, it automatically goes away. You don't need to adopt them. You don't need to adopt them.
So there's no motion? What is the action going for?
What? I want, I wanna make sure that we get a rate study.
That's my direction.
Would that be in a motion or just?
We don't add to it. We just direct staff to do it. So, so your ordinance included in the city rate? So, so you have to do something?
No, because it's only repealing a portion, which it says repealing.
That's true.
A portion.
That's true.
So.
Our, our ordinance and our item are written correctly.
So we don't need to take any action?
The only thing we need to do is direct, direct staff to get the rate study planned and done. Is that not true?
So again.
Other than that, no other action.
And I apologize for, for, there's a lot of information we've taken in tonight. So twenty-four, if there's no action, it reverts to the pre-fifteen rates, which is what they had before, just for the out-of-city. So they're not gonna realize any increase. Is that what I understand?
Yeah, then we doing the same thing as last year.
Yeah, so they're not gonna have any, any, any rate increase for this year, even though the in-city residents did have an increase.
They're gonna, and they are gonna get a refund for, I guess it was three months basically. It'll be a credit on their bill, but yes, we will refund the improperly collected rates.
Alright. Any other question on item number twenty-four? Next item is item number twenty-five.
Do we, we need to.
Sorry?
There's, does Brad need to rescind his, his motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I would like to withdraw my motion on item twenty-four.
Any further action? Done. Item number twenty-five, deliberate take an act on first reading of an ordinance. The city of council, the city of Rockport, Texas, partially repealing ordinance number nineteen ten regarding wastewater rates for ratepayers located out of city. Providing for refunds, providing for the validity of said ordinance, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date.
That's fine. Discussion.
This is just on the waste, the wastewater.
Do I have questions from council? The action being the same, trying to invalidate something that was done improperly and get back to something that is. I will move we pass and approve item number twenty-five as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If there is none, a call for a vote. Ward one.
And no.
Or two?
Aye.
Or three?
Aye.
And four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Vote passes four to one. Next item is item number twenty-six. Postpone from November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, deliberate an act on first reading of an ordinance, the city council, the city of Rockport, Texas, amending the city of Rockport code of ordinances, chapter one oh two utilities, article three. Wastewater service, division four, service charges by amending wastewater rates for out-of-city customers, providing for validity of said ordinance, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date.
Mayor, council, it's the same items that I have, um, that I have for the water I have for you up on the screen, uh, for wastewater. Again, the green is what I'm calling the free nine fifteen rates. That's last year's rate. Purple is what we adopted, the, whatever color that is with all the highlights is the leaf rate. And the red is an equal to, an increase equal to the in-city rate. Um, you can take action or no action. I have a directive from the last item to get a rate study going. It will also cover this.
Much pleasure, council.
I, I would, I would like to stick with the, uh, the pre-nine fifteen rates, uh, so considering no action with the, with the understanding that a rate study will be completed.
Counsel, any other thoughts on it?
I can support the rate study.
Yeah, I don't personally support a rate study.
Alright, then there will be another action taken on item number twenty-six, and the rate study will be conducted on wastewater as well as water. Back to number item seventeen. If you're here for that one. Item number seventeen, deliberate an act on, deliberate an act on, that's what it says. On request to close South Austin Street from Market Street to South Side War Street. West one-half block of Main Street to Austin Street, one-half block of East Main Street towards Water Street. And west one-half block from St. Mary's Street to Austin Street on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. From four PM till eleven PM in March sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, from seven AM till eleven PM for the fifth annual crawfish festival. Yes, sir.
Mayor, just asking, we have, are we gonna do cards before presentation?
Do you still have them? Okay. I'm glad. I thought they were gone. Very good.
I hope you wanna do it.
Have a seat for a minute and you can, so that we can let people talk just a little bit. We'll get to you. Thank you. I have a card, and if you're Billy McRae, you're the person I was fixing, they call name, he's right back there. Come on up and talk to us.
I've never done this before, so. My name is Billy McRae, and my wife and I own Attitudes and Latitudes, two oh nine South Austin Street. We live in Harbor Oaks. I attended a downtown merchants meeting recently, and the main topic was the crawfish boil and closing Austin Street over the spring break twenty-four by, for a private, uh, business. There's also a market ban and admission fee. I don't agree with the closure of any part of Austin Street by a private business or any market stalls that compete with downtown merchants. I decided to find out myself and put together a petition. I think you've all got a copy of the petition in your file. I walked Austin Street from the Shell Shop to nearly Market Street from Thursday, the thirtieth of November, to Saturday, the second of December. I met with a lot of merchants and employees, and we have a very unique set of stores that are downtown. Uh, I did not ask Chamber, Art Center, Little Theater, or the Paper Store. I also did not visit Harbor Residence and the Bates Stores. Summary of results of petition are as follows. The vast majority say no to any closures. It's plus seventy-five percent. Uh, I walked the Shell Shop to War Street. Plus seventy-five percent, no to closures. War Street, no to any closures. I think it was a hundred percent there. War Street to Main Street where the gate starts, no to any closures. The only person I could not get was the guy that owns the old gas station and, uh. Uh, Main Street to Market Street, five said no to closures, two said no in Main Street. So that's a total of seven. Four out of the six store, stores on the left-hand side of that section, block four hundred and five hundred, said no. Uh, uh, the main, that was it. The main reasons and objections that, uh, concerns by merchants, not in any particular order or ranking. Number one, public safety. This is spring break. Our emergency services will be stretched. Parking, loss of income for merchants, loss of income for employees. Our employees are very important too. They, I didn't get them to sign it, tried to avoid it. They kept bringing it up. Profit-making event for a private business, which is a nonprofit, and it's not a charity. This is the start of the twenty-four season. We already have customers. It's our kickoff. It starts our year, or feels, feels our year. We will have to close for the day, some, uh, shop owners and some restaurants said. Uh, it's not just two days, or from four o'clock Friday afternoon, their setup, takedown, cleanup, and smell has been a, a complaint. Noise. We have people who live downtown who had to move out of their house last year because of the noise. Not very many. Drunk driving. There's drunks.
There's already a market that day, the third Saturday.
Thank you, sir, but your time just ran out. Yes, sir. Thank you. Alright. Start Ward one. What have you got on Austin Street closing?
Uh, two fifteen, South Water Street and eleven oh four War, uh, Warf, let's see, she's, the giant agenda, item seventeen. Um, representing South, uh, Brain Boutique. My husband Stan and I live downtown at two fifteen Water Street, own a business at eleven oh four Warf, and lease, um, Southern Rain Boutique. Our concerns about the request to close Austin Street for the crawfish festival during spring break are parking. The festival is too large for downtown. Last year, the organizer publicized that people could park anywhere. Cars parked on both sides of Water Street, across our driveway, and on our grass, ignoring our tape and cones. Also, the navigate, Navigation District has said it won't sign a lease for parking until construction on the breakwater is complete. Lack of fully developed plan. It is unclear how parking would be directed, and there is no mention of police assistance to direct traffic and ticket. Porta potties, no indication about where the required fifty-plus porta potties will be placed. Noise restrictions not enforced. Even though our houses poured concrete last year, we could hear the words to the songs through our home. There are other nearby residents and hotels impacted. Spring break. At a recent merchants meeting, many indicated that spring break weekend was the worst time to close Austin Street. The organizer wants this date because the band is available then. Setup and takedown. There's nothing indicating a time period for setup and takedown. We've lived more, uh, for more than twenty-five years next to Austin Street Limits Annual Music Festival at Silver Park. As it grew, neighbors began asking it to be moved. In response, organizers worked very closely with the city to develop concrete plans that would minimize, uh, impact on nearby residents. Because of this, the festival continues. We're over two hundred thousand people a day attending. Those actions included a detailed plan, police presence, no parking, no parking signs, barriers on some streets, buses to carry people, and strict noise restrictions. While not opposed to ever closing Austin Street, we are not in favor of closing it during spring break. Bonnie Carl, four oh six South Austin Street, um, with the coastal merchandise. I'm expressing my opposition to the road closure and the use of Rockport's downtown heritage district during spring break week for crawfish festival. This event has historically created a negative impact, um, on the environment, small local businesses where, who are already struggling in the area. The areas of greatest concern include, one, inadequate provision for parking. In the past, we were told that a parking plan would be created and adhered to. But when the event took place, participants were told to quote-unquote, "park wherever you can." This created a situation where locals and tourists wishing to visit the downtown district on what should be a very high-trafficed weekend for businesses had nowhere to park, thus leaving. This situation has yielded a net effect of a reduction in sales year over year by forty percent for our business. The feedback from locals who normally do come downtown was that they couldn't park, so they left. Two, access to our businesses. Aside from the parking downtown, the bottleneck of traffic to get to the district creates a traffic congestion problem that causes unreasonable delays in accessing our businesses. Last year, it took a musician scheduled, uh, to perform at our store forty-five minutes to get here from her house nearby to our store. Others made the same comment and confirmed that traffic congestion was a deterrent to them to come to our, uh, the area. Three, safety and police presence. It is our understanding that there is no plan for enforceable police presence for this event, and that only quote-unquote, "on-duty" officers can enforce matters of illegal activities, comma, parking, comma, et cetera. If we do not have inadequate or adequate protection for our businesses that can be enforced, we are left exposed and subject to illegal parking and theft at our locations. This has been a problem in the past during the. This has been a problem in the past during this festival. Uh, R P D is already understaffed per the city manager at our last meeting. Number four, trash, historically, we have seen an issue with excess trash and use of our private dumpsters in the past.
That it?
That's it, yes.
Susan Gerharden. Three oh nine West Market Street, Mermaid Ranch. As owners of Mermaid Ranch, we would like to share our disagreement and concerns about the proposed crawfish festival new location and the dates requested. Setup, closing, and breakdown of Austin Street on March fifteenth through the seventeenth during the spring break weekend will negatively affect our business. Spring break is already a busy, busy time in Rockport for all the businesses. Choosing another date to host this event would bring more businesses to these establishments on a weekend that might not necessarily be a profitable time. We have seen a decline in sales on the days of this event for the last few years. As the event location got closer to us every year, our sales declined more and more. We are also concerned about multiple vendors setting up on the streets outside our store, competing for spring break business. Once the area is closed, our regular spring break customers will not be able to access our establishment. Businesses outside the fenced area will have to deal with parking and crowds. The proposed footprint of the festival and closure of the streets is only about two and a half acres. Last year's event was held on five acres of property. The streets will be overcrowded and a safety issue. There will not be any parking for three days due to setup, breakdown, and street closure. Our customers will not have any access or easy access to our establishment during spring break. The permit has proposed parking allowance for around five thousand people at four people per car. They have stated that there will be ten thousand people there each day. Where will all the other guests, vendors, and suppliers park? This weekend is also market days, which draws a lot of people to Rockport, adding to the parking problem. We certainly do want to be supportive of new festivals and events that benefit the downtown historic district, and we'd be willing to support closing the street on a date other than spring break, when it's not detrimental to our profits. Regards Harper and Susan Gerhard. Sharon Miller. One oh three South Austin Street, Going Coastal Outfitters. Business owners outside the proposed road closure for rock, uh, crawfish festival were not permitted to sign the form stating if we agreed or disagreed with the road closure. I feel all businesses with the Culture Arts District should be required to sign the form. It's closing the streets will greatly disrupt the traffic flow and parking access to our businesses. The event is happening during spring break weekend, which is a critical sales time for quarter one. Customers that are not attending the festival will be greatly discouraged from coming to shop due to having to park and walk a great distance. I understand a small portion of the proceeds from the event are donated to nonprofits. However, I disagree with a private individual being able to make a profit while putting other businesses at risk of loss in sales due to above mentioned concerns. The organizer, organizer has stated that he will be bringing us thousands of customers when we know from the past two years, the large majority just park at our businesses and walk to the festival. There's also the concern of the pour, pour off from all the crawfish cookers. It was stated in the proposal, there would be a way to contain this, but think more specifics is needed on how this, and how this issue will be addressed. I also noticed C J Signs, owner of over half a city block on two sides of their property, did not sign the form, and he will have zero access to his business for a day and a half. Also, the plans show tents lining the entire front of his business. Other individuals should not have the control over your property. Additionally, organizer has stated he has outgrown the beach festival grounds, but we all know other very large festivals are successfully held there and have significant parking that does not disrupt other business, people's businesses. I'm not against the festivals, just believe the downtown district is too small and not a safe and feasible location for the festival of this size.
Elizabeth Green, one oh four Boardwalk. Please vote no for agenda item seventeen for the following reasons. Last year's crawfish festival, twenty twenty two, took up all the parking by midday, Friday through Saturday, sales were estimated to be down forty percent. Issues were discussed with the organizer, who said they had outgrown the location and would have it elsewhere in twenty twenty three, possibly on a ten acre site. Later this year, he discussed having it downtown in April, but not spring break. Early November, the crawfish cookoff was announced on Facebook during spring break. The organizer circulated a petition to the stores that would be in the closed off area, pushing for signatures that day. Merchants outside of the closed off area were not included, although clearly the parking issue will affect them too. The area on Austin Street will be approximately one third to one half of the space that the festival was in last year. There is not an adequate plan for parking, the ten thousand to twenty thousand estimated to attend. A definitive plan for this event was never discussed with the merchants who will be affected, despite multiple requests and opportunities. Any plan like this should include stakeholders and get feedback before proceeding. Spring break is a critically important time for earnings downtown. Due to the parking issues, some stores may close for the weekend, impacting the owners and their hourly workers will not get paid. Restaurants and residents in the area will also be adversely affected. A petition was circulated for those who do not want the street closed on spring break weekend. It includes more of the people affected instead of just those on the blocks that will be physically blocked. There are more against the closing than for it.
What for?
I have, sorry. Have Olivia Ransom, uh, five fourteen South Austin Street, uh, psychic C tattoos. I own psychic C tattoo, and for the past few years, I have been directly negatively impacted by the proximity of the crawfish festival. Last year, even just the parking situation was a complete free for all, with no direction or organization. I had an electrical cable ripped out of my building due to people driving over the sidewalks on the grass to park behind it. I had to set up my own barriers to prevent people from running over it while I waited hours for the electric company to assess the situation to see if it was live wire or not. My client drove from hours out of town that day and was just an inconvenience as I was by the situation. This reflected poorly on me, my reputation, my business, and as well as Rockport as a whole. As this was her first experience being in town and had to deal with such a disorganized mess of parking and people. I also personally know several people whose vehicles were towed because there were no clear indications of where they could park. My shop is only open on the weekends, Friday through Sunday, and I am appointment based, so him shutting down the street would mean me missing out on an entire week's worth of wages, and in this current economy, that is completely unacceptable. My mother also works at First Learning Tree, a couple streets down, and typically has to go in on the weekends to work as well. Every year during the festival, she has been unable to access any parking at all, even be able to go into work, as every parking spot has been filled with festival goers. Parking wherever they can, including private parking lots and preventing people from even being able to do their jobs. The downtown area of Rockport simply does not have the capacity for this kind of event. And why should a festival financially benefiting one business take priority over the rest of us trying to earn a living on what typically already be the busiest weekend of the year? I'm strongly in opposition to the street closure. Then I have Marcia Reed on one oh five Forest Hills, Rockport, Texas, it's shop Sassy Built to. As a downtown business owner of Sassy, I'm in favor of the street closure for the crawfish festival. Although I would prefer another weekend, if this is the date selected, I will support it. Festivals always draw people to them, and I feel this will be a win win, as people will come regardless. We all know how many showed up in the past two years, yet the event didn't add to downtown, I'm sorry, didn't add to downtown but took from it. Parking, a few event goers shopping, et cetera. This event will put our shops in the middle of the festival, and I feel they will shop since they are right there. Parking is an issue that will always need to be addressed, whether the event is held on the street or on the navigation land. I do not want this event moved away from downtown, downtown Rockport, as it would take many potential shoppers with it. We have no idea whether this would be good or bad for us, but I'm willing to try. People will shop with us regardless during spring break. The more the people, the better. It has worked well in other towns, I would love to see us try.
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Um, thank you, uh, my name's Ronnie Garcia, representing the N R B O House and the fifth annual, uh, crawfish festival. Thank you, um, a couple things that we know, know, uh, some facts that I wanted to mention, um, first, before we kind of get into answering a lot of questions. We began the festival in two thousand twenty, right, right as soon as, uh, COVID hit, uh, to Rockport. It's just something that we were trying to, to do to raise money for some local organizations. Um, as soon as that festival was over, COVID hit, we were done in Rockport for about a year. Um, fortunately, um, I kept trucking along, just kind of having a good positive vibe, and we opened up, uh, twenty twenty with the first festival that, uh, Rockport had from, you know, through that whole year, so it kind of helped, you know, boost our economy. When we saw that happen, we knew that this is something that we wanted to continue. Um, we didn't see the foresight that, how big it was gonna get and, and how it was gonna grow and, um, I don't know how, but somehow that, you know, during the date that we did it, uh, the market days guy ended up, you know, kind of booking that in front of us. Uh, but we had outgrown that spot anyway, so we looked for an alternative, uh, place to have it, and the navigation property on Water and Market Street was available. And, uh, I thought, oh, wow, that'd be a great idea, put a festival here, bring people downtown, and, um, and go from there. So, I'm very optimistic when it comes to Rockport and the downtown and bringing people in. I believe as a business owner that festivals help us out, no matter where they are, no matter when they are. Um, a couple of reasons, you know, just answering some questions that I have it on spring break is because for some of you guys know, I do work for the school district and that's when I'm off. And that's pretty much the basic, you know, you know, reason I did that. Uh, I can't, I cannot plan a whole festival during the weekend I'm working, so, uh, um, we do, uh, sponsor the event, the Boil House sponsors the event along with some, you know, local businesses that help with advertising and help, you know, the cost of it. So we pay for everything, we don't ask for hot funds, we don't ask for any motel taxes, so we pay for everything. Uh, so when the money comes in, everything is paid for. Uh, this year's budget for the festival is over a hundred thousand dollars, and I'm not asking anybody to help me pay for that. Uh, we've given away over the years, almost sixty thousand dollars to local groups, for age, project graduation, different things like that. Uh, so we do, you know, give back to the community as much as we can. I totally understand, uh, where the, where the downtown merchants are coming from. Um, there's some conflicting, um, you know, information that I have, because, you know, I don't have his seventy five plus percent or the hundred percent. Uh, if that's the case, I would, you know, I would track the festival from downtown completely. I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, I don't want to cause anybody to not make money. I truly, truly believe that if I can bring ten thousand people to the street of Austin, that all of them will be very profitable. I mean, that's just my optimism on that. Um, over the four years, we've had zero liability issues. Uh, I check, I mean, I'm one of those guys that check, um, the next day on Sunday and Monday and see who's got put in jail for D W Is and, you know, that kind of thing. And I've, you know, I've never had a situation where I'm like, God, that guy came from our festival, they got in trouble. It's a family event, you know, people come from all over, uh, and, you know, it was, it was really weird when we started it because crawfish is not our food. It's not, it's not, nothing that we do in Rockport, and so it was kind of a risk, and so I was like, you know what, let's try it. And it's quickly become, uh, you know, one of the, one of the, one of the contenders as far as festivals in town, so we're really proud of that. The reason why we chose spring break and the reason why we chose downtown, uh, Austin Street is because I don't want to take the people across the street to the back. Um, I know that affects the, uh, the downtown merchants because they become a big parking lot for the whole thing. And contrary to what people are saying, I never just tell people to park wherever they want, um, you know, they're gonna do that regardless. Um, I do, I did try to put together a parking plan, I went and visited, uh, multiple locations downtown to make sure that, uh, you know, if we had it down here, could we, you know, could you fit a hundred carts here, could you do that? And all of them were saying yes, including First Learning Tree that somebody mentioned. Uh, they have offered their parking lot up as a, as a way to raise funds for their, you know, their, their school. Uh, but by no means do I want to hinder anybody from making money, wanna, you know, wanna hurt downtown, uh, and the merchants at all. And if, if it's the case where, uh, the gentleman is true on his petition, I'll be more than happy to back out. Be more than happy to back out. There's other cities that would like the festival, there's other locations that I can possibly look for. Uh, and maybe the city has locations that they, they could recommend for a festival this large. Uh, but no, by no means do we want to affect or adversely affect anybody downtown. Um, from, from, from our petition, uh, we were almost ninety percent, ninety five percent for the festival downtown. And that's the only reason why we pursued it, uh, because we just figured that it would be a great opportunity to bring a whole bunch of people. Just the atmosphere in itself would just be awesome for downtown Rockport. We visit cities very often and go to festivals where they kind of do the same thing, and, uh, you know, I was willing to be the guinea pig for the first time here in, in Rockport, so, uh, it doesn't matter either way to me, I'd like to have it there, uh, but if, if the council doesn't want it there, they, they feel that it's not a fit, then I'm, I'm more happy to oblige. Any questions for me?
I have a question. Um, so the application says, uh, March fifteenth from four to eleven P M. and March sixteenth, seven A to eleven P. So is this assuming that there's no impact to public space outside of that window? How are you addressing?
Yeah, by, by midnight at, on Saturday, on the seventeenth, uh, our people are, are told to be out of that downtown area.
So midnight's not what this says, and so this, so you've got vendor setup, porta potties dropped off, stages set up, and, and I'm not picking, I just, that's not what the application says. So this says at four o'clock, you would have access to public space, so you don't need access prior to four o'clock on Friday?
I mean, I mean, it's public space, people can go in there, it won't be, it won't be barricaded until four o'clock.
So I, I'm, so you.
You're gonna be dropping off things before that, so you're gonna need that space before four o'clock.
On Friday, correct, but not, I mean, not that much, Friday's mainly a concert, uh, it's mainly just a fence concert, you know.
Okay, so I want to clarify the difference between a street closure to through traffic and basically free rental of public space because, and, and maybe it's not the right agenda item for all the other issues. So is it one and the same? I mean, are we just talking about through traffic in this item or the entire event and all the occupancy of public space downtown?
So our, our concern is gonna be the closure of through traffic. Um, he can, I, I, you're gonna have to authorize him to set porta potties. So if it comes in and he needs to start doing it at two o'clock, then yeah, we're gonna need to know that he's gonna set them on the side, side of the street at two o'clock or he's gonna set them on the sidewalks because he will be closing off access to that public space, whether it be a sidewalk or a parking spot or a right away. So those hours would need to accurately reflect.
Correct.
Time you're gonna use the space, the entire time.
The entire time, yeah, correct. I mean, and normally, if we were set up in a different location, we'd have a couple of days to prepare for that, to get set up and everything going. But I do understand what the, what the challenges are. You know, it's more of a challenge for me to have it downtown than where I was having, I'm absolutely, uh, but I'm willing to do that, you know, to, 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 to keep the people in front of the stores rather than take them out of the, out of the, out of the downtown area. But I do understand that there's some, there's gonna be some challenges to do that.
So she's asking, what kind of time are you gonna need that? So your application says four o'clock, what do you do?
The vendors, I would say the vendors need it maybe, I mean, they're, they're quick vendors, there's some pop up ten, ten by tens. I would say they would need an hour and a half to get set up. The cookers don't come in till the next day.
So realistically, we would need it too.
That would be, I would, that would be a good estimate.
And the cooker, so, so we're gonna reopen at eleven o'clock, all the public spaces are gonna be reopened, and then you're not gonna shut it down again till seven in the morning?
So your vendors are gonna clear out?
No, they'll be there, they'll be there on the Friday night.
So you're gonna hold it all, so you need it all the way through?
Correct, through the, from the, you know, from four o'clock on the fifteenth, or two o'clock on the fifteenth to midnight on Saturday night, or, I mean, I'd like, as soon as I can get out of there.
Okay, so that was, date and time was my first question. Second was, is regarding, we talked about an event permit of some kind, I know we're not quite there yet. So is there any impact fee, anything that we're, we're working with him as far as the rental fee? Because I mean, just like when you go to the fairgrounds, you pay the nav district to use public property, so what are we charging Augie to use our public property? Because there, there's gonna be cleanup and there's, there's ripples effect.
Sure, being that we do not have an ordinance, I do not charge him a fee. I do believe we can charge an actual cost, so if we have a cleanup cost, I can, um, roll that back to him, or if we have, you know, whatever our actual cost, staff cost, anything like that, I think I can charge him actual cost. I do not have a mechanism to charge him a fee. Now she wants to be generous, make a donation.
Absolutely.
Have y'all reviewed the traffic plan, parking plan down there? Do you have any concerns with it?
So to that end, Mr. Garcia has complied with everything we've asked of him. Expresses to a public, my only concern is we are closing a public street for a private company. So if I wanna go shop at, whatever, Song, Songbird Chief, I have to buy his ticket.
Let me, let me, let me, let me clarify that, I know that was a question too. So Friday night is the only time we, uh, charging admission fee, it's for the concert, it's for, you know, we, we pay, we got Wade Boyne coming, uh, so we're gonna, we have to pay him, so I can't just let everybody in free, well, I could if we had some hot funds or something like that. But, uh, we're gonna pay him to go in, so that's the only time. After that, the fences are there solely to keep people from bringing alcohol in and out, or food or drinks and that kind of stuff.
So on Saturday, if I just wanna go shopping, I can walk through your thing, I can go to the booths?
Absolutely.
I carry alcohol from, you know, that, uh, there's a local pilot, you can drink alcohol anywhere in Austin Street. So I nobody stopped from walking from my store to my friend's store within the year because we're selling alcohol.
Thank you, we heard you already, thank you.
He's talking to me.
Anyone else put questions, Stephanie?
Yeah, I, yeah.
I did a presentation.
I did a presentation. I just cut off three minutes. By the way, the NAV district charges a dollar per entrance if it ends the time of law. Twenty thousand, we get twenty thousand.
Excuse me. You are out of order. You need to stop. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir. Stephanie?
So Augie, I've, you know, we've talked a lot regarding this. You know, from the beginning, I kind of helped you to figure, you know, speak to this person, ensure you have this going on. But my biggest thing was you get those, you get the support and the backing of those businesses.
And that's what I, I mean, before tonight, I thought we had that. I mean.
I know. And just reviewing the signatures and knowing you don't have that support. It's hard for me and trust me, I'm at your festival every year. You know that. We've known each other for a very long time. But I can't in the foundation of my choices, support one organizer and profit them over other businesses at the majority. I think this would be a huge thing for our Nacho Star City, but downtown specifically. That will always be my priority. But I think that it would be best to put it on a different weekend. And I understand work and organize. I get all that. Trust me, right? I just don't know where we can come to that agreement. I think they would support you. You would have their backing at a hundred percent. If it wasn't the concern of taking away one of the most profitable periods of time. And that right there, everything else, I have some parking concerns because you're, some of it's just like tossed in the air. It's a good starting plan, but nothing is solid yet. Parking's a concern, but we always are going to have that issue. I think there's a lot of people, just like I said, city, the old city hall. See if you can't get people in there to raise money for the scholarships for school, people will do it. You have Ranses County Medical Association sitting right there. They'd love to set it up. You know, EMS could do it, raise scholarships for the school, things like that. Parking we can do. We can tell you to get more trash cans for the six times that were reported last year. All of that's negotiable. If you do not have the support of the downtown merchants, it's, it's going to fail regardless. And this has the benefit of everybody.
And, I mean, and that's where, you know, I'm, you know, I'm very optimistic because I really don't believe that if I can put this many people in front of their stores, that they can lose. I mean, maybe it's just me, but I don't think they can. And I don't think that it gets any better if I decide to use the property behind them. I think, and then, then they're going to be a parking lot. They're going to park there. They're going to go over there because it's public parking. I can't tell them not to park. With me closing down the street, at least I can, you know, try to, you know, move people around and then put people right in front of them. And I mean, I agree. If they don't, you know, I mean, I'd be willing to do another petition. If we get knows all across the board, I, like I said, I'd be happy to back out of that deal. You know, I've got to have the festival. I mean, I can find somewhere to do it. I'd love to have it downtown. I think everybody would, you know, be real profitable, you know, on it. And, you know, it's unfortunate that the people that are for it didn't write in because, I mean, they just, they're just like, ah, we're just going to, you know, we like it anyway. So, you know, go ahead and do your thing. But, you know, that's just the, the way it is.
So I can kind of like second her, you know, I think you throw a great festival like every time you have it. And I appreciate what you're trying to do and I think it can be great, but you got to have the backing of those merchants. That's, it's going to be very important to have that done. So I just have to second Stephanie's statement.
So we're assuming right now that we didn't get the backing. So according to our petition, you know, we had maybe two that said they weren't for it.
If you look at the packet, there's, there's a whole, I can't even remember how the sheet it was. There's a lot of signatures.
You can look up and on the agenda packet, not the agenda, there'll be two separate. Click on that, download it. For the very end, you'll see the petition.
It's the petition that you picked.
Yeah.
So there was, there's, it was not just these.
So I.
But there's also these today as well.
I might like to just clarify.
Okay.
The petition you got is for everybody in the area that is closed off. So, you know, he, he kind of did what was asked of him. But yes, these are merchants outside. I'm just, just for clarification, Joe cares not.
No, I, I appreciate that. Thank you for clarifying. No, I, I did understand that, but I think it's, it's, it's a whole, the downtown is a whole. And so I think not just the, it has to be the whole merchant area that's going to be affected and that should be included.
Yeah, when I looked at it, it looked like there were some that maybe originally supported it, but they've changed their mind because they're on both of them.
I hope regardless of the decision, you keep this thought to, I think it's great. Work with them to do something in the future, please, because we need these opportunities.
Oh, yeah.
At Rockport. And I think you're the perfect person to kind of help bring something like that to a petition down here. But it is, that's, you know, just as if you wouldn't want to be left out with being a business owner down there from start to finish. You know, it can be yours, you can still own it, but involve that district, involve that community that you guys have built down there. Okay?
Okay. I mean, there again, I mean, I mean, the proof is there. And if, if therefore, if they're against it, I mean, more than happy to retract it. I mean, I mean, absolutely. But I, I can't say we'll, we'll be right back, you know, back where we were last year and it'll be even worse. I mean, it won't be worse, but I mean, it won't be as good as, as what they could have.
I'll give you a couple of questions, sir. When, when is a, a drop dead date for you to, to have a decision from, from us for you to move forward?
I mean, I'm already behind.
As far as insurance, the booking, I guess, the confirming of the van?
Yeah, I've already booked a lot of things with the kind of just, you know, locations up in the air. Just because, yeah, you got to book way in advance. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of already behind the, you know, the, the scheduled date. But like I said, I mean, we'll, I mean, we'll, we'll find somewhere.
I've, I've been to festivals in downtown areas and to me, they seem successful. You know, it's, it's basically what you have here is it's a, it's a walkabout through the entire downtown area where areas are closed. And, and I a hundred percent support the crawfish festival. I'm just wondering if, if we can, between now and, and maybe the next meeting or something, if we can get with the Downtown Merchants Association and, and maybe sell the plan to them and, and get more, more buy-in from them.
I mean, I can't tell you that a lot of them that have, that have signed the petition to not have it are outside the fenced area. I just don't have the funds to include the whole street. I mean, I would love to fence in the whole street, everybody involved. And a lot of them were, had changed their, their, their minds because they're outside of it. And they feel like that everybody's just going to rush in and they'll never get that business. But I don't, I mean, I, I see it, that everybody's going to walk around everywhere. The fences are just totally there to keep ice chests and stuff in and out. I mean, but, I mean, I would love to visit with them again.
Did you, did you attend the downtown postal or the downtown?
I had another meeting there with the, with the school, but some are dead and then I tried to show up as soon as I could.
Okay. Some would be like, good things. You can actually go and talk.
Yeah. And I didn't actually give them a plan. I mean, a lot of the statements they had on there were, you know, give, show me this plan, show me this plan. And, and, yeah, that's all I'm fine. But I mean, it was a work in progress. It was something that I just couldn't just hand over until I, I got my, you know, my apples lined up, you know, in a row. So, I mean, I'd be more than happy to show them the, you know, the plan as it is now, so they can see how many officers are there. So they can see how many porta potties are there. So they can see, you know, exactly how it worked out.
I mean, I'm going to have to, I mean, I, I'm going to support Stephanie. It's her ward. She's going to have to live with this one way or the other. I've been to your, your festival. I volunteered at your festival. You've got challenges to overcome. They are able to be overcome. I mean, every challenge, every festival, you learn every year, you get better. There's no doubt that you're getting better. These folks that I'm hearing have seen those challenges in the past, and now you're putting it right on their front door and have it included them in the planning process. I don't know how you get past that. I have opinions that I want to share with you. I've shared with you in the past when I was volunteering at your event, concerns that I had on the safety of the event and how it was being managed. But I'm willing to let all that go, just to say, the people who you're impacting the most aren't supporting you. And for that, I mean, I'm not going to say anything else because I'm, I'm going to defer to one representative.
And like I said, I, I, you know, at this point, I, I mean, I, I agree with the petition. And we, like I said, we will retract, you know, our, our, our request for the downtown Austin area.
I, I don't want to lose the festival. Festivals, I don't want to see you go to another city. Doesn't make sense. And I think there's some, there's some way to work, work through these issues. I'm just worried if we can do it on the timeframe that you need. We have a, what are we, January? Is that too long for you?
Uh, I mean, we're going to, we're going to proceed in trying to lease out the navigation property. You know, as soon as they get that cleared off, you know, we can, you know, we can try to get that property and continue our festival like we did last year. If the city comes back to us and says, you know what, we've, we've gotten an agreement with the downtown merchants and they'd like to have it in front of their stores as opposed to having it behind their stores. And we can always change that.
I mean, the, the plan, the plan you presented to us in the packet, it, it looks great. You know, PD doesn't have an issue with the parking plan. You, you've done everything that the city has asked of you, so I, I, I want to support it, but not, not if the downtown merchants don't want it. So if we could, you, you said they haven't seen this yet? They haven't seen?
They haven't seen the plan. No, they haven't seen.
Not in its entirety. He has been forthcoming with, as he has developed it. I think the inclusion of merchants came a little too late was the problem. It just wasn't enough information soon enough for them to feel fully involved when it, they felt it directly impacted them. But Augie has, and Summer did very well representing herself and both of them at the merchant meeting. But it just was a little too late, I think, Augie. But you, you pull some things back together, you bring this right back to us. This is an opportunity that we want here and you'll have my absolute hundred percent support. But I have to look at what's best for the downtown market as a whole and not just what may profit one person guaranteed. You have a guaranteed profit. I'm risking their livelihoods and their businesses and that profit that they could be at loss for during that period of time. And that I just can't sacrifice my decision. So I'm going to go ahead and move to deny the request to close Austin Street from Market Street to South Side of Whorf Street. That's the whole thing. West one half block of Main Street to Austin Street, one half block of East Main Street towards Water Street. And one half block of St. Mary's Street to Austin Street on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, from four P M. to eleven P M. And March sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, around seven A M. to eleven P M. for the fifth annual crawfish festival.
I have a motion, give me a second. I have a motion and a second. Any further questions?
Would y'all be amenable to, to, to a postponement until next meeting, see if he gets the merchants? Can I amend the motion? I'd like to amend the motion to postpone until next council meeting, given Augie time to.
The petition is not tomorrow.
Ma'am?
It would be our next regular council.
Yeah, next, oh, good point. Next regularly scheduled council meeting in January, given, given time to present this to the downtown merchants, the, the proper plan.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I'll second that.
I have another motion, second. All right. The motion's standing right now. It's postponed until our next regular city council meeting and reconsidered. Do I have any other question on that particular motion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Did I have a second, by the way? I think I did. So I have a motion, second, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
And four. Mayor, aye. We have to work on the first motion. First motion was to, was to deny.
That amended the main motion.
Yes. Which is now we have to, we have to vote on the main motion which was originally made.
I got it. I have credit to you. Okay.
So we'll call for a vote.
Did we do it wrong?
Wait.
So we're going to postpone it and I think they'll all agree with that?
Yeah.
I think we would have to vote to deny the first motion because we're still have to get rid of it. That's what you get from reading that book. Anyway.
We just voted on the first.
I asked if I'd agreed at all.
I think they would have to vote no on the first motion. What we need to do is vote on the first motion, the primary motion, and we would vote no.
That I did to deny.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So the vote, the vote is to deny it?
Yes, the vote is to.
We're going to all say no.
Yeah.
So that the second hit brass motion would be effective at the yes. Okay, go for the vote.
Okay. Ward one.
Nay.
Ward two.
Nay.
Ward three.
Nay.
Ward four.
Nay.
Thank you.
Nay, it's done. Come back and see us.
We got one more.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Robert's words were sliding downhill after that.
I know it's late. It's ten fifteen. We're going to take about ten minutes and come back in here because we have been right here for a while, five minutes.
Five.
Somebody said that whatever they got to go do.
Thank you.
And A E P still hitting, sitting here.
I'm just trying to get around to eleven o'clock. I said it would be.
For Mr. King. Your microphone's on now.
My microphone is on now, okay. Uh, it is now ten nineteen and we are back in session. Agenda item number eighteen, deliberate and act on second final reading of ordinance amending the official zoning map of as stipulated under Article four point one of the City Rockport zoning ordinance number ten twenty-seven by changing the zoning of land from R one first single family dwelling district for property located at eighteen seventy-five State Highway thirty-five bypass, also known as certified auto repair. City Rockport, Ranses County, Texas, to be one general business district comply with current use of property, repealing all ordinances of conflict with therewith providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Ms. Dietrich went on.
I'll make a motion to approve eighteen as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Number nineteen, deliberate and act on second final reading of an ordinance authorizing the closing vacating abandonment of a zero point one six seven acre of land being a sixteen foot wide alleyway out of block number thirteen Bellevue subdivision, Ranses County, Texas, according to the map recorded in volume one, page twelve, plat records of Ranses County, Texas, providing for terms and conditions of such vacation and abandonment, authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deed for the zero point one six seven acre to be closed, vacated and abandoned and providing for an effective date. Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda item number eighteen as read.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question? We'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Number twenty. Deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance granting A E P Texas Inc., its successors and assets assigns a non-exclusive franchise to conduct, maintain and operate lines and appliances and appliances for conducting electricity in, over, under, and through the streets, avenues, alleys, and public places of the City of Rockport, Texas.
Mayor, council, this is, uh, again, like it says, a non-exclusive franchise agreement to allow A E P in the city. Um, it hasn't changed, I don't believe, from the last one we did. Um, if it has changed, it's been reduced from twenty years to fifteen years. Fifteen year license of a non-exclusive agreement.
Okay.
Mayor, Mr. King's been patiently sitting back there. I don't know if he has anything to say, but at least he's high.
Say a few words?
He told me he was just.
Everybody else has.
Support.
He made it this long, he could at least come say hi.
Okay.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to to be with you this evening. This is, this is a renewal of the existing franchise agreement that has been in effect for twenty-five plus years. Uh, with 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 communication with the city, uh, we did reduce the new agreement to to a term of a fifteen year uh term that which is before you now. It's an operational agreement. It's common with all three hundred and seventy-four communities we serve in Texas through ninety-three counties. So it's a, it's an agreement that we have with each each and every city. So appreciate your consideration on it this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions, council?
I make a motion to approve under number twenty as read.
I have a motion, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further question? We'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Number twenty-one, deliberate and act on first reading of ordinance amending City Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-six Businesses by adding Article three, short-term rentals, repealing all ordinances to the extent they're in conflict, providing for severability, providing for penalties, and providing an effective date. Mr. Kane.
Hi, Patrick Kane, number twenty-three. East Cedar Street. I'm glad we're all still awake. Despite the agenda packet stating the discussion regarding the registration of short-term rentals has been ongoing for many months. This is the first time the public has seen this version of the draft ordinance and the changes are significant. It is, it isn't right to give city staff a year to draft their ordinance, then give the public less than a week to provide their input, especially during the holiday season when people are focusing their time and attention elsewhere. Do you think second homeowners who live out of the area are aware of this draft ordinance? And that they will have to hire a property manager due to the requirement to have a local contact person? I'd say that is highly doubtful. The ordinance states there will be fees to cover the cost of compliance software, inspections, registrations, renewals, and a new code enforcement position. Yet the agenda packet does not show what these fees will be. The city is also ignoring the substantial revenue short-term rentals already generate through business property tax, sales tax, and the hotel occupancy tax. Surely some of that revenue could offset the fees. I have already pointed out several significant issues to the city staff that should prevent the ordinance from being approved tonight. These include the city hasn't updated existing ordinance to go along with this new ordinance. For example, private garage, servant and guest quarters won't be able to be rented despite longstanding practice that has allowed these rentals in the city. Another one, the state comptroller's office has interpreted the hot statute to exclude R Vs from taxation. Yet you are including R Vs in your ordinance. Number three, the third, the Texas Third Court of Appeals ruled daytime visitors cannot be counted as occupants as it represents a significant abridgement of the fundamental right to peaceably assemble. Yet you are counting them as occupants in your ordinance. Number four, proposed proposed timelines for appealing a suspension or revocation are ridiculous. You're giving the owner only ten days to appeal and that includes the time the notice is in the mail. We're talking about a drastic action and owners should be given ample opportunity to receive the notice and to respond. The five-day time limit to appeal the city manager's decision to city council is also way too short. More reasonable timeframes would be thirty and forty-five days for the two appeals. Number five, I'm completely against inspections at my property. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm completely against inspections as my property should be, should not be subjected to the government's cry and eye unless there is a plausible basis for believing a violation will be found. The free market will weed out unacceptable accommodations. In summary, the draft ordinance is not ready for approval. And even if it were, the second and final reading should be delayed until January to allow the public an opportunity to review, not tomorrow. I'm asking for you to vote no on this agenda item as it's not ready. Thank you.
Uh, Eric Henderson was here. He is not here now. I have a page from him. I agree with Patrick Kane's comments during the previous town hall meeting prior to supporting such an expansion of city government. I would like to see some kind of report of the complainants attributed to this type of business, including dates, locations, name of the complainant. Uh, in this culture of government managing our lives from cradle to grave, I would like to see the citizenry step up and preserve the free market before it disappears entirely. Perhaps a trade organization could be formed by those pursuing this type of business. In this way, the private sector can police itself and it's time for limited government and a balanced budget. Kristi Rutledge.
Kristi Rutledge, fourteen eleven Data Drive. Uh, I have a lot of concerns about, um, proposing a short-term rental policy restriction on December twelfth, first reading. We pass on final reading on December thirteenth. Um, a lot of us don't have any opportunity to absorb actually what this means. I can tell you that in discussion with the Ranses County Appraiser uh this year regarding their proposed increase of, um, hundred and forty-seven percent, something like that, crazy, hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars on my property. Uh, they're assuming that all properties can be sold for cash, um, that are not in H O As that prohibit S T Rs. And that they could be eligible for S T Rs. Uh, I know that a property, um, on the street behind me sold just a few months ago with an accessory unit. Uh, it was advertised on the real estate market, um, with an S T R, um, potential. Uh, so that's an up and coming market in my neighborhood. My neighborhood is basically two streets. Um, I'm looking at long-term, how can I afford today in Ranses County with appraisal increases like this? And now you're taking away for this policy. From what I can tell, the potential for me to earn accessory, um, income off an accessory rental, my property. Um, that was part of my long-term plan. Uh, so I don't see that this is, uh, right for you all to to do this, considering that we are going to be paying property taxes as if our homes were available on a short-term rental market. And now you're taking it away. So it's a huge source of income for the City of Rockport, um, to have the ability for, uh, S T Rs. Listen, if it's no longer viable to have as many as we have in town, then the free market will take care of it. Those will go into the long-term row of will, and that will increase your supply of affordable housing. And this is an initiative coming down from from D C, actually, that A D Rs, accessory units are a really good thing and most cities have it. So I don't understand why you would do this and limit us in this way. Um, and, um, and I don't see why you're doing it other than just to ram it through without anyone having a chance to get up here. Um, and the business owners that are relying on this for their ability to remain property owners here in Rockport, they didn't, they didn't have a chance to know this. The second homeowners that have S T Rs, they're, they're in vacation, they're in holiday somewhere else, wherever they live. And I have no idea y'all where they're from. So I think it's wrong. And, uh, this is an opportunity for city council to do the right thing. And as Patrick Kane said, delay it until January. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dave and Beth Foster at thirty-six Curlew submitted this. Mayor Tim Jaro, city council members, the city manager Vanessa Schrauner. We want to thank you for your tireless efforts on planning and preparing a thoughtful short-term rental policy for the City of Rockport, balancing the needs for someone who wants to rent their property along with protecting those neighbors who can be negatively affected by bad actors. The current proposed ordinance is a positive step in the right direction. We also ask that you set permit fees and fines at a level that supports a self-sustaining program. The ordinance should not burden the taxpayers of Rockport. We fully support and ask you to pass this S T R ordinance. Lynn Powers, sixty-six Blue Heron Drive, dear city council, city manager, Mayor Jaro. We are pleased that Rockport's considering implementing an S T R policy. Many of our sister cities such as Fredericksburg have successfully implemented such a policy which works well for the residents of the city. Program you are implementing appears to be current protocols and laws that are reasonably and fairly, you know, reasonable and fair. If a homeowner is turning residents into a business and making an income from the residence, there should be additional costs. The city needs to balance the needs of those wanting to rent and the neighbors that pay the price for it. Everyone I have spoken with regarding this initiative is very much in favor of it, the reason many do not speak of it, so they do not want the amount of negativity on next door and other social media outlets to be directed at them. Please follow the silent majority and allow this bill to be passed. Thank you for your efforts, Steve and Lynn Powers. Yes, ma'am.
I'm up.
I guess.
Oh, mayor and council, we have spent the better part of a year gathering input. Um, as you know, we did a forum in each ward to gather input. There is also a short-term rental council. I don't know what their official membership is. The meetings I've been at, there's been about thirty reporting members in each meeting. We've worked through them. We have, of course, the four, um, open forums in each ward. Um, and we gathered all the input and basically what it boiled down to is we could address all existing problems, issues that we wanted to to try to curtail through our existing ordinances and and enforcement of those. So all of the regulations in here point back to, not to say all. The regulations in here point back to an existing ordinance. The difference is we do have inspection for safety. I believe earlier in the year, y'all remember we had a fire in the S T R and I think there was a death in that, but. Anyway, so issues we're looking for are safety. Um, we're establishing occupancy so you can't say that your one-bedroom, two hundred square foot storage room sleeps eight. Um, because then we get the traffic and the trash that don't match that. So the initial inspection, the registration fee, um, those are the things that are different than our ordinance. The inspection fee, I think we decided was fifty dollars, um, in a previous packet and I really apologize for not being in here. We have the cost for the management software. I think it's about thirty thousand dollars a year. We will need, I, in my mind, eventually a total officer. Um, for a while, we'll, we'll manage with what we have and see what the calls are and see what the load is before making a decision out of that. But that would certainly come back to you, uh, before we made any hiring decision. With with the revenue top of the register, we'll start small and grow and that's kind of our philosophy on this. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So just kind of go back to what you were just saying, so the, why we did it this way is because everything that we put into the S T R, that we went and did all our research, we talked to people, we went and did all that. It was easier just to go back to our existing ordinances and keep it the way it was and having to not change it. That's what you're.
Right. So one of the issues was parking. Well, we can't obstruct traffic and we can't park on the grass in our current rooms. So why would we need to rewrite it if that's the issue? We just literally point back to our parking ordinance and say you can't do these things.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was very clear. We're not changing what we went and did the research on, we're not changing things up on people, we're not able to see what is going on. We've talked to our neighborhoods, we've talked to people that come in here, we've had open forums. Um, I did talk to, I only have Whister Co. um, that can have S T Rs. You can't have S T Rs really in country club most of places. But Whister's Co., I talked to fully people this weekend and they were just fine, but they they didn't see any changes that were gonna, that were gonna hurt them. Um, just wanted to put that out there. Uh, and then I just also, with the fees, we do have to make sure that's in there if we're gonna pass the ordinance, so people do have that in front of them. So if we're gonna do a second reading, I would like to.
So the fees will be in the fee schedule of our, um, ordinance.
Can we have just that, if we have a second reading tomorrow, can we have that out there on, in front of people or, you know, on record?
Yeah, and there's no, there's no rush to do it tomorrow. If you guys want to wait till January, there's no order. We've been working on it for a year, um, so.
That wasn't my second.
We, you know, it's an effort to keep business moving. If we're already meeting, let's put it on the agenda, but let's move it to January. I'll have those fees set, um, we'll, we'll know. One of the, one of the issues is setting the fee is, I don't know how many we're gonna get. You know, we think we have about seven hundred operating. But do we really only have four or do we have twelve, twelve hundred? So that, you know, that number can kind of flex. If we start small, then we're in the position of raising fees, so we're, we're kind of taking a stab at it. And, um, like I said, we want to start small, we'll grow it if we have to. Um, but just understand that the number we put out there is gonna be a stab.
And, and just for clar- clarification for me, if I remember correctly, I mean, I know we've talked about this a lot, but the rental state monitoring program helps us to identify those operators out there who are flying under the radar, who aren't doing the right thing, who are causing the problems. So I know we've got good business owners out there that are doing the right thing. The problem is y'all are getting, or they're getting beat up by those that are out there not doing the right thing. So it, it, it's tough, but this is gonna help us find those others.
One of the modules of that, they scour all the rental sites to say, uh, does this have a permit? Does it match up with our permit, um, permitted module?
Yeah.
So yes, you're correct. It will scour that whereby no city staff member needs to be sitting on furrow to see if. It will scour that whereby no city staff member needs to be sitting on furrow to see if everything is registered in town.
Well, I, I'm okay with Andrea's recommendation to postpone at least a second reading. What I just, I want to thank staff. You know, this is kind of your first big change. If I, I mean, there's lots of things you've done, but this process you laid out of the public meetings, the input, the drafts that have been floated, the, I mean, this is, I think this is the right way to do it. You know, we're never going to be a hundred percent and meet everybody's expectations. But this was a good process, and, and, I mean, I'm proud of it, and you should be proud of it, too. So, I mean, I like the process.
We worked hard. We got a lot of input, too. I mean, to say that we heard from four hundred people, that's huge for open houses in town and all of the things like that. Granted, we didn't take everybody's input. We took the best of the best and ultimately narrowed it down to what we could do. But that was a lot of people that spoke up on this, so it wasn't a loss.
For me, it was clear there was issues. I mean, in my ward, there's, I mean, I looked on it. Brad, Andrew, y'all got, y'all got the most of them in your area. I learned a lot about the challenges that are occurring in y'all's areas. They don't happen as frequently in mine, but there's no doubt there's problems out there. So if you guys are good with the ordinance, I can support it.
He has the most, so he has the biggest issues.
Other questions, Council?
Two, two things, and I believe Vanessa just emailed back and forth on them. Section twenty-six forty, the, you know, we picked the dates, ten days for the appeal, and then five days to appeal to the city council. I would like to change that to thirty and forty-five, just give them a little more time for everybody to get their ducks in a row. And that's just on, on appeal of violations. For those not reading the ordinance. We picked ten to five, and that may be a little short for everybody to get, especially if they're out of town.
Like said, it's a number, but what you want to...
So I'd be good with either thirty and thirty or thirty and forty-five.
If I recall, the reason for the short suspense with these would be like health and safety violations, right?
If it's a health and safety violation, we're going to bring a fire marshal in and shut it down regardless.
Okay.
You know, if you have, I can't think of any reason that you would need an appeal. I mean, because you're following our existing ordinances. So what are you going to appeal? And maybe I'm just not thinking broadly enough right now, but if it's health and safety, we're not going to allow that to continue to be rented here. It's not, it's not a profit entity to do that.
So extending this to thirty days or whatever Brad suggested, that would be for like parking violations, trash, nuisance?
Well, violations are going to be fined on sight because you break the ordinance. That's what I'm saying. I can't think of what would be appealed. Maybe you're going to appeal your sleeping quarters, your occupancy. So you're going to say, yes, I only have a three-bedroom, but each bedroom is five thousand square feet. So I need more than whatever it is, two plus four, or whatever that, that sleeping occupancy is. That is something I guess you could appeal. So thirty days, forty-five days, that's fine. I mean, I say make it forty-five and forty-five so we're sure to get a meeting in there.
True.
So...
Okay.
Anything else?
I just have one question. I know, I don't have as much like history with this as you all do, but I know events are really big down in this area, and it was mentioned the daytime occupancy. How do you distinguish between short-term rentals that are capable of holding events and the daytime occupancy restriction?
So we don't have a daytime occupancy restriction. We have a sleeping quarters occupancy restriction.
Okay, so it's just an overnight style?
Right, it's an intention. I can't tell you you can not have a wedding in the backyard of your short-term room.
Okay.
But I can tell you, you can't have twenty-seven people sleeping in a two-bedroom house. That's a fire code. It's not, I, I'm not going to go to Brad's house and say you can't have a backyard barbecue. I'm not going to go to the STR and say you can't have, you know, that's not...
I was trying to find it in here, and I was like, okay, I'm just going to ask.
No, it's, it's silent on it in the...
Okay.
Anything else? Do I have a motion?
The, one more, one more thing, I'm sorry. We have the existing rentals, the accessory dwellings, and that, that's currently addressed in our R-one, R-two, R-five zoning that you cannot have accessory...
Right, they're illegal now, with or without this.
With or without this. But it's, that has not been enforced, I guess. I think my name, Brad, there's a few.
I'm sorry?
Nothing.
No, I just need to hear you.
I think in, in, in Ward Three, there are a few that I can drive to right now that, that are mother-in-law suites.
So they're illegal now, with no ordinance?
They're not going to do it at this point.
I'm sorry?
You could add that if you wanted to, too.
No, I mean, because it's in our zoning.
It's in our, yeah.
We'd have to change the zoning. We'd have to change the zoning.
You'd have to change the zoning and the zoning ordinance.
Got you.
Can't change it.
Can't change that one either.
Not tonight.
I, I mean, historically, if it hasn't been enforced, I apologize. Also, are we going to go seek out and say you've got a mother-in-law? Probably not. But you do have to register and get an inspection, and we're probably going to say you can't do this. Maybe that's something that you can appeal, but it goes against the zoning ordinance. It doesn't go against the STR ordinance.
I feel like that would be something that we maybe can discuss, you know, if you could.
Well, I think at that point, you go P and Z.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
And so it's, yes, it's addressed in here because it refers back to the zoning.
To the zoning ordinance.
So if you're running a mother-in-law, it's illegal. No ordinance.
Anything else?
Yeah, we've gone downhill.
I think some people have you, they're like, I can't get a mother-in-law.
Sorry, Mary. Right, we've gone downhill.
Okay. I make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Twenty-One with the change of the forty-five days.
So actually, our was made a good point. That is the time to file, not to decide. So I think two weeks, thirty days is certainly sufficient to have your filing. It doesn't say you have to make a decision at that time.
It's thirty.
Okay, thirty, thirty and fees.
Okay, thirty, okay. Make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Twenty-One with the exception of the thirty, we're going to make, we're going to add this to thirty, thirty days. And with the direction that we add those fees, and we can do the second reading in January.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Now we'll call for a vote, Ward One.
Aye.
Ward Two.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Robbie?
Okay. The city of Rockport operated a surcharge revenue account, which is called the Fire Fund on, on bills. As an opt-out program, however, per the Code of Ordinances, we found out that that surcharge was mandated under penalty of suspension or loss of municipal utility service. So what we're doing is, on, well, on November fourteenth, at the council meeting, y'all were informed of the disconnect and asked us to prepare an ordinance to support the practice of voluntary participation and in accordance with PUC Chapter Twenty-four Subchapter F, which I think that's what you were, you were referring to. So amending, or it's redlined in the ordinance, that now that, that ordinance would be restyled as municipal utility customers who opt out of the municipal utility bill surcharge under this article will not be subject to the suspension or loss of municipal utility service. So that's what it's changed to, to make it voluntary. So staff recommends approval of the ordinance in this first reading.
Move to approve Item Twenty-Two, as presented.
I'm sorry.
Have a motion, second. Any further question? Now I'll call for a vote, Ward One.
Aye.
Ward Two.
Aye.
Ward Three.
Aye.
Ward Four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item Number Twenty-Seven, Presentation on Concho Street Drainage Project.
Great, I have a presentation for you if y'all are still interested.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, I wanted to give an update on the Concho Street Drainage Project. As you know, we have completed all of the projects that we are able to at this time, which means we have gone right up to Veterans Memorial Park. Veterans Memorial Park. And we have been unable so far to connect to the harbor. The next two slides that I'm going to be, nope, sorry, timeline. We've been working on this a long time. We were cut off in twenty-twenty-one. We were sent a no trespass letter, version nine. We offered twenty-five thousand for the easement. We have been through nine versions of a license agreement. I don't know the details, but I know Mr. Morton came in and tried to negotiate an agreement as well. Since I've been here in the past year, we've had numerous conversations, but nothing towards getting this easement has materialized. So that's where we are today. What I'm going to show you is, it's a compilation of two, two slides, so if you don't follow me, y'all. But, do I have a pointer? What you point up there, the occupancy, point over to... So, no, I'm going to point down here so y'all can see it. Or y'all, y'all, will you all turn around? Okay, so here's, here's basically where the project has, has been cut off. We're going, the pipe has been installed in the ground for a number of years. So I would say ten years or more, this pipe has been in the ground. The, the issue is getting across this, this piece of property right here. The Navigation District apparently some ten, fifteen years ago agreed that this outfall would be here and putting in here. So if Kimberly will go to the next slide, here's where it might get a little confusing. We have this pipe, we have our new pipe in the ground going through. But since we're not allowed to connect, we've cut it off here, and we go through this pipe. Now, can you switch over a little? Oh, back, sorry. And we continue on here. We discharge at the same point. We just put it through a forty-eight-inch straw instead of our exist, or our up-sized holeworks. So we're discharging in the same spot. Now, when you go on to the next one, please, one more. This is the area that's impacted by us not being able to drain through here. We avoided two hurricane seasons without significant flood, so I consider us very fortunate. But I would like to mention with this map, the GLO drainage project through here has taken some relief off of this drain into the harbor. And then some of the road, smaller road projects we did in this area have also taken the, some of the stress off of here. So we now truly have divided it up into basins, and this is the only basin that will be draining into the harbor. So theoretically, we have less flow into there because these projects have been assigned to their appropriate basins. Does that make sense so far? Okay. Are there any questions so far? So if you look at this, if we have a significant event, these are the people that are going to be adversely impacted. It's quite a large area. Same, same thing, different view. What's next? Yeah, in the effort to keep it easy, we surveyed the project, Arch-Drama Sub-easement. We're going to send that over to the Navigation District. We can't do the licensing agreement, the licensing agreement that was presented to us is not anything, any attorney would let us sign that. So we're going to present a standard easement document to go across that property. And then we'll gaze the reception of that, and then we'll take our next steps from there. So that's just the update. We have an estimate of what it's going to cost to finish out that project. When we get closer to where we can actually do some work, we'll get an updated estimate. I'll bring that forward to you because we will have to do a budget amendment to handle that. So would you like one of the, there you go. It's break, it's where we are. We've got to do something, or we're going to flood this people out, the first, first thing that comes to mind. We've, it's, we've got to act. So that's just the words, that's what I'm doing next. I'll take questions, but we just wanted you to know where we are and what we intend to be doing.
Thank you. Council, questions?
No, I just appreciate the update. I mean, you know, this is a really awesome project. It's long overdue to be able to address the flooding in this area. I mean, this project and the others as well. It's very unfortunate that we're this far along in the process, and we, we still haven't been able to make the final connection, literally, to a connection that had been approved a decade ago. So obviously, I went around when these projects, or when this project hit its original wall. But we've got to do something. I mean, that's a lot of, that's a lot of homes. That's a lot of people with funding that's been provided for this purpose.
Our, our fix of connecting the big, the existing forty-eight inches in the ground, is that effective?
I've heard less than twenty percent.
Yes.
So our engineer hasn't given us a formal document, but preliminary numbers were that the project is only draining at about twenty percent. So here's the deal. If we're going to have a flood, it's going. You know, we're, we're not stopping mother-in-law. It's just, are you going to take all those houses out with it, or are you going to let them flow safely? Yeah, run it at twenty percent, that forty-eight-inch straw is not going to handle even a significant rain, much less a hurricane.
Anything else? Last on the agenda is reports from Council. Ward One.
I didn't have very, I was on a cruise. So high drive states, busy as I could the first week. I made a lot of contact. I know that a lot went on downtown. I didn't get to attend myself this, the first year, so not so happy with myself on that decision. But I know that it did go very, very well with Christmas festival. So outside of that, I don't really have anything to report at the time.
The tropical Christmas, I got to ride the, the parade float with the mayor. Staff did a great job. The lights on the side were hilarious because it was like this, like netting, and we, very broad netting, mind you. And so we were laughing. We were getting eaten up by mosquitoes, and we're like, that was Mex, like Rockport, you know, mosquito netting that was along the side. But anyways, it was, it was funny. We got a good laugh.
We did. Brad?
See, I attended the Little Bay Water Quality Meeting today with Vanessa at the Bay Education Center, put on by Texas, Texas A&amp;M and A&amp;M Corpus, and trying to remember all the entities. But it was attended by Navigation District, City Rockport, Town of Fulton, and some others in the community. It was a lot of good information, old studies that were presented, and some areas where they're trying to move forward. But good information was out there. We're going to have another one, sounds like in February, March, have a second meeting. But other than that, nothing else to report.
I, I did attend District, Christmas in the District. It went really well. It was really busy. It's, a lot of people are having a good time, and there was a lot of great, there's Grinches and Santa Clauses and a bunch of dogs. It's Puppy Day down there, so a lot of volunteering going on. Also, I did have, I did hold a little bit, like a town hall in Whistler's Co. to have my community come and talk to me. I had, I think it was about twenty, twenty-five people, so it was good, and I had some food and stuff. And they had to be able to come and talk about what's going on in their town, the neighborhood, and seeing grievances or anything that they do enjoy, you know, enjoy or can improve. So I think that went well.
They got their potholes fixed?
They got their potholes fixed, you know, in their little meeting. So we, I would like to, I'm going to keep that tradition on and try to do little ones in the country club because that is a bigger area, but I just say, it did go well. If y'all ever think about doing it, I think it's a good idea. If y'all ever think about doing it, I think it's a good idea. And it's kind of a little guinea pig and went well, so that's about it.
Pressure.
Yeah, it was down here.
All right. Yeah, I didn't give out booze, sorry. But that's about it on my end.
Going back to police-related stuff, I guess. But it, it's a great time of year, right? And everybody's having a lot of parties and a lot of fun. Y'all be careful if you go to those kind of things, be careful out on the road. There's people that go to them a whole lot. We always recommend that you find somebody that can use a little bit of help at Christmas. There are a lot of people that are very, very happy. There are also a whole lot of people that are very, very unhappy at this time of year. And we need to consider those people. But we appreciate the public being here, whether we always agree or not. I do appreciate hearing from folks. I have been at some council meetings where we wish somebody would show up from time to time. And so we do hear from y'all frequently and I am glad of that, whether we agree or not. Thank you for being here this evening. I don't hear anybody else that says we need to do anything else. Done, it is eleven, it is ten, no, it's ten fifty-nine. I said it would be eleven before we got out here, I missed it by.
Fifteen seconds.